I thought that was crazy, but it was a good time. And yeah, there's, there's some of those things you would like, ah, you might not do that the next time.
All right, it is eight o'clock, so if we could stand for the pledge, I'll call the meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public discussion? Seeing, seeing none. Uh, well, I'll need a motion to approve the agenda in minutes dated April eighth, twenty twenty five. Motion by Garmin. Second by Stecker. Any discussion on the agenda in minutes? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries unanimous. Take a minute to look at the claims. We'll entertain a motion at any time. Hoz, motion to approve the claims.
I'll second.
Second by Wachter. Any questions or discussion on the claims? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Nay.
Abstain.
Oh, one is, one abstention, so four ayes, one abstention. Okay. Next, we have the budget status report. And any questions on that? Otherwise, we can acknowledge the budget status report in minutes. Thank you, Tammy. And then we have public hearing and first reading for the proposed Cassuth County Animal Control Ordinance that addresses animal control within the rural areas of Cassuth County. So I need a motion to open the public hearing. Motion by Garmin.
Second.
Second by Hoz to open the public hearing. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Oh, excuse me, roll call vote.
Hoz.
Yes.
Garmin.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Wachter.
Yes.
Nah.
Yes.
All right, the public hearing is open. And we will go ahead and read the ordinance. Okay. This is ordinance number.
Oh, I forgot to put it on there. Um, hold on. I think it's. Seven oh one.
Seven oh one.
Wait just a second. That might, it might be seven oh one.
I, I think it was an A or B or something.
Yeah, um.
Well, this was.
We were talking, we were talking A's and B's for the stuff with Kendall, but I don't think with this one.
Was this just, was this a seven oh one?
Well, I, but I.
I don't think we're.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, because it is the first.
You're here, I guess.
I was thinking it was seven oh one, but I know I was, I was nervous to say it.
That's, I was too.
I just wanted to make sure, I wanted to make sure the number.
Wrote it down.
Yeah, I knew you, I knew, I knew you said it when Todd was up here a couple of weeks ago or whatever.
And I think I have it saved.
But I didn't write that down.
Okay, go ahead and read.
Yes.
All right, ordinance number seven oh one. An ordinance establishing animal control in Cassuth County, be it enacted by the Board of Supervisors, Cassuth County, Iowa. Section one, purpose. The purpose of this ordinance is to improve animal control within the rural areas of Cassuth County. Section two, definitions. The following terms are defined for use in this ordinance pertaining to animal control. A, dog means a domesticated quadruped descended from different wild species of the genus canine as the wolf, fox, or jackal. B, cat means a domesticated animal of the feline family. C, domesticated animal means any animal that is tame and has been selectively bred and genetically adapted over generations to live alongside humans. D, at large means any dog or cat or any domestic animal found off the premises of such animals, owner and not under the control of a competent person, restrained within a motor vehicle, or housed in a veterinary hospital or kennel or pen. The premises of such animals' owners should not include any public property. The premises shall only include private property. E, owner means any person owning, keeping, sheltering, or harboring a dog or cat or other domesticated animal. Section three, dogs or cats running at large. It is unlawful for dogs or cats to run at large within Cassuth County. The owner of any dogs or cats found running at large is guilty of this section. Section four, at-large nuisance summons. The owner of any dog, cat, other domesticated animal found at large or a nuisance in violation of this ordinance based off of the complainants detailing the time, date, and duration of being at large or a nuisance, and/or photographic or video evidence submitted by a complainant. The complainant may be required to appear before a proper court to testify to the charges made for violation of this ordinance. Section five, animal at large prohibited. It shall be a violation of this ordinance for an owner or person in control to permit or allow any domesticated animal to run at large or to remain at large. Section six, animal nuisance. It shall be unlawful for any person to permit an animal under such person's control or within such person's custody to commit a nuisance. An animal shall be considered a nuisance if it a, damages soils, defiles, or defecates on private property other than the owner's or on public walks and recreation areas unless such waste is immediately removed and properly disposed of by the owner. B, causes unsanitary danger or offensive conditions. C, causes a disturbance by frequent and habitual howling, yelping, barking, or otherwise, or by running after or chasing persons, bicycles, automobiles, or other vehicles, molests, attacks, or interferes with a person or other domestic animals on public property. Section seven, impoundment. If upon investigation there is probable cause to believe that a domesticated animal's continued presence would impair the safety or peace, a law enforcement officer may apprehend and impound the domesticated animal. The officer shall provide written notice of impoundment to the owner if the owner's name and current address can be determined. The notice shall be sent within two days after the domesticated animal has been impounded. The notice shall provide that if the owner does not redeem the domesticated animal within seven days from the date that the notice is delivered, the domesticated animal may be humanely destroyed or otherwise disposed of in accordance with the law. Notice is delivered when the officer mails the notice by regular mail. An owner may redeem a domesticated animal by paying the costs of impoundment. If the owner of the impounded domesticated animal fails to redeem the domesticated animal within seven days from the date of delivery of the notice to the domesticated animal's owner, the domesticated animal may be disposed of in accordance with the law. If the domesticated animal is destroyed, it must be destroyed by euthanasia as defined in Iowa Code, section one six two point two. Section eight, penalties. After receiving two prior warnings of violations of this ordinance from any law enforcement official, any person violating any of the provisions of this ordinance is guilty of a simple misdemeanor. Any person convicted of such violation shall be punished by a fine of not more than eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and not less than a hundred and five dollars, code of Iowa, section three thirty-one, point three zero two, parentheses, two. Section nine, repealer. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section ten, severability clause. If any section, provision, or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section, provision, or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section eleven, effective date. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and publication as provided by law, adopted and passed by the Cassuth County Board of Supervisors on this fifteenth day of April, twenty twenty five.
It actually isn't being passed today. It's just the first reading today, so.
Okay, okay, sure, yep. Okay, well, that was the first reading then. We do have a, an objection to read, I believe here.
Need to read it since you just read that, or do you want to read?
That's, that's fine, if, yeah, you can.
Okay, it's, I did forward this to you guys last night, um, in your emails. It's from Hillary Gibbons Zials, uh, one oh five two sixty Street Wesley, to the Cassuth County Board of Supervisors in regards to the animal control ordinance. I am a volunteer for Cassuth County Tales of Hope Rescue, a five oh one C three located in Algonah. The Tales of Hope mission is promoting responsible, responsible pet ownership, finding homes for lost, abused, and unwanted pets, promoting the humane treatment of animals through education, and advocating pet population control. Tales of Hope owns a shelter and adoption center for forty-five cats at twenty one oh two eightieth Avenue, Algonah. I would like to ask the board to consider language in this ordinance that would allow what are known as trap neutered return, T N R, programs to move forward in Cassuth County. These programs are a growing practice in Iowa and the U.S. for managing community cat stray or feral populations. These programs involve humanely trapping cats, neutering or spaying them, vaccinating them against rabies, and then returning them to their original territory. T N R is considered a humane and effective way to reduce the number of cats in a community as it prevents further breeding and reduces the number of cats entering shelters. You may look to Des Moines Ordinance's fifteen seven thirty-five for language about the care of community cats, which are already, as you well know, at large in all of our Cassuth County communities. I advocate for replacement of much of the language in the Cassuth County ordinance as it is currently written so that the ordinance will not allow, not disallow T N R programs. In twenty twenty five, Tale of Hope was awarded a grant from the Cassuth County Community Fund for two thousand six hundred and ten dollars to launch a pilot T N R program in Algonah. Through this grant, we expect to build a solid foundation for T N R in Cassuth County. Please do not pass the animal control ordinance as it, as it is currently written and allow time for revision. Thank you, Hillary G. Zials, Animal Control Ordinance. And then she did list, um, Iowa communities with T N R programs. Do you need me to read those?
Okay. Okay, so we, and any, assuming no comments from public then.
That's the only objection.
Okay, the only objection we received then. Okay. Any, well, I'll entertain a motion for closing the public hearing then. So, it doesn't look like we have more public comment.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Garmin. Second by Stecker to close the public hearing. Roll call vote, please.
Hoz.
Yes.
Garmin.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Wachter.
Yes.
Nah.
Yes.
Okay, and then we have the discussion decision to approve first reading of proposed animal control ordinance that addresses animal control within the rural areas of Cassuth County. Anything the board would like to discuss? Um, anything in the objection that feel we should address?
I guess, I think we should discuss that at least a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, obviously, I'm not an attorney, but I don't think our ordinance would apply to what they're discussing there. I don't think there's anything in our ordinance that would hinder them. Um, this specifically references like owner is defined and, um, it's, I guess, I don't think it addresses feral or community cats as she was determining. I don't think, from my knowledge of T N R programs, I don't think they are designed to pick up your cat when it's outside the front of your house for ten minutes or something like that. It's cats that are obviously wild and stray and causing an issue. So, I guess this ordinance is directed at owners that are willfully or intentionally not controlling their animals. And, I mean, we've discussed kind of the situations that prompted it before, but I don't, I guess, my opinion is, I don't know, I mean, I'm not opposed to adding language to our ordinance that would clarify that, but I don't think our ordinance currently would be an issue for what they are intending to do. So, that's my judgements.
Well, and my, that was kind of my question of, I'm not sure how the ordinance disallows T N R programs. I mean, they would still be able to function and do what they do within the language of the current ordinance. I, I don't know.
And I mean, we could, we could potentially just leave it for a bit and see if we can get Todd to come up when he's available and talk about it with us, but I guess, I don't.
He's probably gonna come up at some point, isn't he?
Yeah, I think he's.
Yeah, he'll pretty quick, probably.
I think he should be up there shortly.
And we could, we could call him and see if he's.
Domesticated. I think that's the thing that stands out the most is that in our ordinance, it says domesticated animals. Domesticated means that they're brought up in a home.
Cats are domesticated whether they're in a house or not.
Uh, it defines as any animal that is tame and has been selectively bred and genetically adapted over generations to live alongside humans. So, whether that's your house cat or your barn cat, it's kind of just, it's cat.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a lot more than just one individual in the population. So, yeah, I guess.
The T N R program will come to my house. There are too many cats around my house, isn't it? Can you come over?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't, no, I don't see anything in our ordinance that would punish them for doing that, I guess.
No, it sounds like a good program.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if it's, really, if, if they're doing this grant and this program, then theoretically, there should be less need for the ordinance as time goes on. It should, they should work together, I, I would, I would think. Or complement each other, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that one is gonna eliminate the issues that the other's addressing, but, um, like, the T N R program isn't gonna address the issue in the Lots Creek area that we're talking about. That was, uh, and that's, I guess, that's where my perspective on it is that I don't think it addresses what they're requesting. Obviously, it would, like, I don't think it hurts to include extra language to specifically define that and say that it's okay, but I don't, I don't think our current ordinance addresses that because we're not addressing cats that are wild, um, and haven't been in a house for months or years.
I don't think cats are the main focus. I've never got, on the board, I've never gotten a complaint about a cat.
Dogs would fall into this category.
Number of complaints about dogs.
Well, you're typically not afraid of a cat.
I, I'm not afraid of a cat coming and attacking me.
You don't know.
Right, right.
But, but it's a good program. I mean, it.
Yeah.
Obviously, what they're doing, that's a good program.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah, we're not superseding any town ordinance or anything. This is strictly rural. Uh, everything I see listed regarding towns and, and if somebody's got a, for something to happen to this animal, that somebody apprehends, if they apprehended, they could, that's an option. This would still be an option for them to, if there was a nuisance cat and law enforcement apprehended this nuisance cat, it's, they could still go, this would be an option, right? Or is it have to be put to death?
Didn't it say something like within seven, seven days?
So, yeah, it's, seven days to claim your animal. And then the op, then law enforcement has an option to dispose of the animal according to the law. And whether that be euthanasia or whether that be finding a different home, now, I guess that would be discretion to, to law enforcement.
To pick apart her sentence, but something has occurred. It's currently written, so the ordinance will not disallow T N R programs. Does she mean to say it will not allow T N R programs?
That would be my assumption, but I saw that as well.
Any, Tammy, do you have any insight with this? Oh, I just, okay.
No.
All right, thank you. I don't, I don't know what the hassle is to rewrite language and everything, but I don't think, uh, my opinion is that it's not worth it. But we can wait and see what Todd has to say up here.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd say it would be in her best interest to give him a call or going down to the office to see if he's been unable to come up yet, because this one and the next one will. He might not meet in here for.
One forty-one, Josh.
Yeah, we can, we can wait.
But also, like, the impoundment side, you have to notify an owner, so.
Correct.
I don't, I don't see this addressing stray cats around the community. I think it's specifically animals that are owned and in control of, or.
I don't know if Jackie's one forty-two or one forty-three.
Probably won't see it on the machine, but if you're desk, two, it says.
Okay.
Hey, this is Josh up in the boardroom. Um, do you know if Todd's gonna be coming over soon? Um, yeah, we're discussing some stuff on the animal ordinance up here in the boardroom, so.
And then the next one that says staff transfer.
Okay, all right, thanks, what?
She got let him know?
She said she was gonna shoot him in the neck.
And, I mean, we could, whatever, they said he came, comes in at eight thirty. Do you wanna skip this?
We can, we can.
Gets up here.
Yeah, we, that'd be fine, um.
You go to open enrollment?
Yeah.
Let's see, yeah, yeah, we'll go to open enrollment. We'll wait for him to do the employee transfer too. Yeah, good morning, Donna.
Good morning.
Hi, Donna.
Good morning.
Review and decision mandatory employee attendance for open enrollment twenty twenty five.
Okay, so last week, Department had, kind of had this discussion on, um, the relevance and the importance of open enrollment. There's been many questions, your staff, you've obviously heard those things, but, um, we need to encourage our employees to come so they can understand the changes, if there are any, I should say, because I don't think we're anticipating changes, but if there were to be, um, and also understand really what the policy offers. I understood there were a lot of questions even after as to the policies changing. So I pulled out the, I think years ago, we used to do mandatory enrollment. I have no understanding of why that disappeared. Um, it basically just said that I'm unable to offer one of the three sessions offered, and then the department head signs off on it, but we thought we'd bring it to the board so you guys could also impress the importance of that.
Okay.
I, I think that I was here when it was mandatory and, um, I think that's okay to do, in my opinion. I, I think it's actually a good thing. You know, we.
There's gonna be circumstances where somebody's on vacation, so that's fine, but just the general, I didn't feel like, you know, making it or whatever, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, the three of us were there for the Department of meeting, so, yeah, we talked about it on Thursday. I, yeah, I guess, especially all the discussions about changes and benefits and all that. It, I think it all needs to be discussed at the same time.
Be communicated at one time, yeah.
Yep.
Well, and so everybody's hearing the same thing instead of, um, parts of, parts of the story or incorrect information or whatever it may be.
We've kind of, you know, stated we wanted to communicate and have that education, so let go ahead forward. You know, it's an obvious that we have communicated things, so.
I wasn't able to make the meeting on Thursday, but, um, we have a lot of questions in our office throughout the year on stuff that's answered during those meetings. So it would be advantageous for our office also. You know, not that we don't want to answer questions, because of course we always will, but, um, sometimes it's.
It might help eliminate, and I think it might help eliminate the whatevs or the.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, so then we need a motion to make it mandatory or, or it's just, just discussion?
It just say decision.
Decision, decision.
I'll make a motion that we make open enrollment mandatory for employee attendance.
Okay.
And I guess I'll, I'll say twenty twenty five and beyond, if it's, if we want to go away from it after that, we can, but I'll, I'll say.
Continuous, unless changed, yep.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, motion by Stecker then.
I would second that, or did you worry?
I already had his hand raised.
Okay, no problem.
Silent second by Hoz. And, okay, any other discussion on that motion?
Yeah, you mentioned the three, um, do the three sessions and if they can't make all three sessions, do the sign off.
They have to attend one of, there's three different time offerings, and there may be four, um, just for a few brief updates. We typically have tried to get it done when the, um, road crew has their safety committee in April, our meeting in April. And then, kind of over the years, we've either offered them a seven AM session, a nine AM session, or one PM session. The last three years, I did a five PM session for some of our shift workers. The attendings did more of having, you know, because Applex stays, I mean, I'm not opposed to doing that, but I think we've got to get an investment that they'll come. So maybe that will be by reservations only for that five PM.
I, I think we probably should have a later one, especially when we're making it mandatory and.
But I think we'll do by reservations, because if they're not gonna show up, I mean, that's the whole thing. I mean, you've got a hunk that shows up, and then the offices here tend to split that. I'm more than willing, but then, and I'm kind of leading into that next, Michelle will be here, so that, have her be here from seven till six. I don't know that we can, you know.
I, if it's fair to, to say you're gonna come to the five o'clock session, make it home.
Bet you're at least, instead of me calling.
So just sit here waiting for somebody to show up.
Right, right, yeah.
That's fair.
Yeah, that is very fair.
I don't have a problem having it, but I kind of have a problem when we're sitting there and nobody shows up.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
So, is that all in one day, the, the seven?
Historically, do it in one day.
Does that do, that doesn't catch the county's safety meeting day two, or doesn't?
The safety date?
You said the county road workers.
Oh, we'll do, we'll do the seven AM for them, so they've.
That's that day?
No, it's in April, but since we are not able to meet with them in April, because we don't have everything ready to go, we'll offer a seven AM session, but typically, they've usually done a great job showing up. It kind of looks like a red truck parade. They're here. It's the, it's the, I mean, I, I'm not giving, discrediting the shift workers, but then, so that's hard if they've gotten off or gotten on. That's why we've tried to offer the different time schedules, but it's also a significant benefit that is important.
There, there needs to be a pretty serious reason for not attending.
Right.
Especially with all the conversations that have been had.
Very good. There's the motion in second. Everybody understand the motion? Any other questions?
Basically, the motion is to make it mandatory unless you are signed off by your supervisor.
Okay, uh, all in favor of approving the motion on hand here, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries unanimous. Okay. And we have discussion on benefits at a glance for upcoming insurance years.
So I did talk to, or I emailed Michelle Moon regarding her coming up. Um, she would be available May twenty eighth or twenty ninth. Then I think what we've talked about is having her go through and do like a hypothetical, and I call it benefits at a glance, where you kind of line up your, like, the states and other cities, but they, they line up what your benefits could be and do it side by side, so you can look at those choices. We are gonna go to a choice. I think at that open enrollment meeting, she would just do a brief introduction to a high deductible plan. Again, some of that.
Is this gonna be before open enrollment meeting?
It'd be at open enrollment.
No, our discussion.
But you guys, yeah, you will need to have a discussion, yes, and what you want to. But you guys, yeah, you will need to have a discussion, yes, and what you want to.
Do we have a date for open enrollment meeting?
May twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth is what we're looking at, that she would come.
Yep.
But just kind of going with that format, if that's something you want to pursue.
And so you're saying, sorry, just making sure I understand, that they would need to talk about it prior to talk about what they're gonna be.
What they're kind of thinking, you know.
So that employees have an idea of what, what it would mean if they chose that high deductible plan.
What options we want them to discuss.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, yeah, and then she could give a refill review.
Yep.
Yeah.
Very preliminary, very, you know, but I still think you guys kind of need to know what your parameters might be, what you're kind of thinking. Given that until next year, we're not gonna have numbers.
Yeah, and we, we talked about that at the department head meeting as well, but the the confusion of we don't know what actual numbers are, is not gonna be able to change, because we only get our pricing in at late December, early January timing if we're lucky. So, no matter what we do, that's not gonna change, but if we are able to maybe I'd say finish our conversation from earlier this year, or any other conversations we've had. I think the employees, or the main questions the employees are gonna ask is, what's their premium cost per month? What benefits as far as deductible or whatever, what's that threshold for each plan? And if we have a high deductible option with an HSA, is there any contribution from the county? Or what that dollar figure is, so for them to be able to look at options side by side and actually make an informed decision, we have to kind of get to at least a draft or a final product that we are even considering, so. I mean, when we talk about stop loss and all those other things, that has zero impact on the employees. We have, we set our contribution and all that, those are the pieces of the conversation that actually affect the employees, so. If we come up with a yeah, whether it's a side by side comparison of what could have been or whatever, that's what we were talking about. Having that discussion forward to see where we are looking at as far as comparisons.
Yeah, I, I was under the impression that we were gonna try to use the numbers that were available for this year to show what might have been, or what could have been.
Yep.
And if you're not, you're not actually getting stoned, which is to give everybody a chance to see what could have been and, and, and see how we could modify it, you know. Different people have different ideas and different people have good ideas. So this is something that we might have done, had we pursued it, which we didn't. And this was based on the rates from, I don't know that we need to come to a hard agreement on what we're gonna offer, but this is a hypothetical situation and tear it apart and let us know.
So maybe have her do a side by side comparison of what it would have been with a standard high deductible plan.
But.
I believe it was, what was it called, the Alliance Select Two or something like that, next to the
Yeah.
High deductible, something like that, and, but she had a comparison.
She, yeah, she had, she had comparisons for us and she had what the expected cost for all that work. I guess the piece of that, that I don't think we finished the conversation on was how much, if we have that as an option, how much are people paying a premium? How much are we contributing to an HSA? All those pieces of the equation, we need to say, okay, if we're looking at these as side by sides, where does the final product actually break down that people could choose from? So that's what we were talking about, having that hypothetical scenario, that you could see that side by side comparison. And I don't know if everyone's ready to have that conversation now as a board or not, but that's what we talked about at the department head meeting. And we brought it on the agenda for today, so that board could have the conversation that this is what we were talking about having a discussion on, so that we could use that as an example to communicate, right?
So what you're saying is you'd like for us to say, and I'm just throwing numbers out, it means absolutely nothing. We're gonna, as a board, we're going to contribute two hundred and fifty dollars a month to an HSA. You want us to have that hypothetical question where answered?
Well, the employees need that answer before they can make a determination of what is in their best interest, so.
Or is it hard to compare?
Yeah, if, it's like saying that an employee's gonna, and I mean, you could throw any number at the wall, and I guess that's, I think that's where a lot of the confusion comes in, is everybody's throwing numbers at the wall in their own head, or in conversations with others, and it's not actually what the board presented as an option that's on the table. And whether you call it a, a what could have been situation, or whatever term you throw on it, we need to have a at least a draft final product of what we would have been talking about with this year's numbers, which would give them a realistic example of what they could do research and compare and contrast and say, okay, if we, if we had two hundred and fifty dollars towards an HSA, or the premium that was paid was currently at two fifty for family, if that went higher or lower, or wherever that actually ends up, that comparison is what we need to have as a end product, so employees can say, okay, if, if XYZ events happen to me, whether I have zero medical issues, or whether I have a car accident and all this happens, or a cancer diagnosis, or whatever, if you run that scenario in your head, obviously, I could be in a car accident today and have medical bills associated with it, and you never know that stuff. But you could run a hypothetical of, oh, what would have happened, either this current year coming up, or what would have happened the last five years of my own medical history, or the last ten, or whatever. You can use your independent, independent personal opinion, you can talk with friends and family, you can do whatever. But at least you know what kind of options were on the table and what may be the best for your situation, so.
Can you, uh, can you and Doug and Michelle, could you, could you put together a hypothetical of, of what, what she was talking about and what you think maybe it, it, uh, it might look like in your minds and then?
I think we could ask her and then bring it back, I mean, we're just, now we're just talking, until you have some concrete. I mean, it isn't concrete, but it's at least something written and prepared.
We, we don't have a lot of time, but you can put something together and talk about it in a couple weeks, or we can go through the jet and talk about it more today, I don't, you know, I don't care either, I've, uh, I don't know, I'm not trying to lay it off, I just.
To some degree, I mean, I don't know if Michelle can prepare a lot more for us, um, because she's already gotten us the unless we're wanting her to vote different things, I mean, I think really the last things that we need to do are, or.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna, excuse me, I'm sorry.
You're.
We're, we're gonna need to know, based on what she had this year, you know, here's the premium difference, here's, here's this, and then you need to decide how much you want to contribute, how much you could do. It's not gonna be painless, I mean, it, it's a decision, it's not gonna work out, but it's great for everybody in every situation, it but the beauty of the county is you can change your mind a year from now, you're only stuck with that program for a year. And stuck is, is, uh, you know, unless you have an ongoing health problem, you're, you're gonna face the same dilemma every year, I don't know what's gonna happen, but this appears to be best for me under the circumstances, this round, but you can change.
Doug and Donna, is it, would she be able to tell us what other counties in Iowa do?
Do we ask for that?
I don't know how many other counties actually, first of all, are self, self insured.
Sure, sure.
And then second, you know.
Okay.
How, how they handle that.
Okay.
But a lot of it has to do with, with, with their self insured.
Okay.
I don't know if ISAC has plans for that, I guess they're gonna look into it.
Just an idea.
So just a question that I had, so when we were talking about the, you know, the, whatever it's called, the Alliance Select Two, or whatever it's called. So with those, the high deductible going to those two, two things, so either you did this or this, does the current program go away? Or is that still an option?
Well.
That, that's where my question was, if somebody, I mean, is that still an option?
Are we current, current plan to high deductible versus a, a new current plan to high?
What we were talking about was just comparing the two, but, and Michelle could confirm this, but I'm pretty sure we could offer three, but it gets more complex and complicated for employees to make that determination, but also then you still have to have a I think it's a threshold of ten that would choose each plan to have it eligible for renewal. But you would have to, I mean, just saying it bluntly, you would have to have a difference in premium paid by the employee for that current plan that would make that at least a comparable option, so.
Well.
It, it would, it, I think it could be part of our conversation, but I don't know if that would muddy the water at all.
So Amber, does your question mean, like, the deductibles would change for both? And we wouldn't have?
It just means like, you know, what we currently have. Okay, if that stayed status quo as an option, and then we offered those other two, um, with maybe, I don't know, we're offering more incentives, maybe possibly to go to the other two, but it would, and I'm not saying we have that, I just didn't know for sure. Would that still be an option if it was better for a person to say, well, no, I, I'd prefer to stick with this, but I'm will, you know. But yes, I understand my premium that I pay is gonna be three hundred and fifty dollars a month, or whatever it is.
I, I think it could be, and maybe that would correlate with offering that for, even if it was for one year, and then having a special open enrollment period at the end of the year, that would give people the option to finish out their current deductibles on the calendar year schedule. So I mean, maybe that'd be an option, we could say, we're gonna offer this for one more year with a special enrollment fall, winter timeframe, and then let everybody know that it's available for one year with a higher price probably. But then it's gonna be gone after that, that might be an option.
Why would it have to be gone after one year, why couldn't you keep it?
If you, if you had enough people staying on it, you potentially could, but I think it would come down to the financial incentives for the other plans, um, and where that price breakdown is.
Well, I mean, in, in all fairness, I guess you can't really make any kind of decision like that until you actually know that people aren't taking it. You know, obviously, if you have zero people who are interested in it, you know, at that point, whatever, but then if you do have, say, twenty, I mean, then I don't think it should have to go away, because they're actually, if they're willing to contribute, you know, the different amount, it might be, I, I think that's still okay.
It really depends on the response.
It really does, it really does, but I I'm not trying to muddy it, but I just feel like.
Yeah, no, I understand.
It could be a good thing to say, well, hey, you can keep this, but it's gonna cost us. Yeah, Donna was looking at me like, what, no? I just, I, I don't know, I was just curious, because I didn't, I wasn't clear on that, if we switched to that, if that would go away.
Right, right, yeah.
Discussion, but we weren't doing it either, so.
Yeah, no, and, and I had that same question too.
I'm eventually gonna need an answer why the deductibles are calendar year and the plan changes with the fiscal year. I don't know if that's for our convenience, Walmart's convenience, Blue Cross's convenience, or, or what? Uh, is it have to do with our budget, uh, and how it changes, or, but it seems like there's a stumbling block here. We can't change plans because all my, all my old deductible goes away, it seems like there ought to be a way we can, we can get things the same way, but if there isn't, just let me know, tell me why, why we can budget it?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's, it's our.
Three or four months instead of fifteen months.
And I think, I think their deductibles.
So why can't the deductible go from July first?
I think that's for taxes and calendar year, I mean, your calendar year.
Yeah, I think that's a Walmart controlled decision, and I don't think we can change that at all.
And your overall.
Find out, let's not think what it is, let's find out. It might be quite right, I don't, not questioning, but let's know.
Yeah, I mean, it's a fair question to ask, but I guess with all the things we discussed with that, and I would have expected Michelle to say that it could be changed, if it could be changed, since we talked about it quite a bit.
Well, could we wanna put it on the agenda in two weeks and, and make a decision on what options we want presented to, to employees, or?
I think it'd be in our best interest to have Michelle up here for a discussion with the board, and then have the alternates that she sent up here, so I mean, if any questions, whether it be that question that Howard just asked, or something else, if those come up during our conversation, um, it'd probably be helpful for us to help get them answered while we're having the conversation.
I mean.
And then.
Yeah.
The rest of, the rest of it, as far as what we charge in premium, or what we contribute to an HSA, she's said how many times, that's our, our discretion of the board, and that's our, that's our own internal conversation, but if we're making decisions on that based on knowns or unknowns with Walmart, it would probably be helpful to have them here.
But she's already given us some information, options that we would talk, and I guess you were, you know, I mean, I see what you're trying to do, but you know, it would be helpful or whatever, but we could also, I would think if we have a question, could ask her just to be available by phone too, and.
I wouldn't have a problem with phone or electronic, I mean, we could have her on Teams and whatever too, but.
Or not, yeah.
I, having, having her present for the conversation is what I was primarily focused on, I guess, I think sometimes having her here in person just makes the conversation a little bit easier, but and I know she's been willing to come up before, but.
But isn't what needs to be discussed what we want to put in it?
I think that's kind of what she's waiting on too.
Yeah.
For the most part, I would.
We need to have our discussion first, before we tell her, this is what we want. To me, I feel like, I don't know, I almost feel like I shouldn't say wasting her time, but, you know, I feel like we need to have that conversation and say, here's what we want, and then give that to her, and then have her available to hear that and put something together.
And if she has questions.
And if we do that in short order, if we can, then I think she'll have enough time to put it together. And she probably already has it, you know, it's basically that side by side that we did receive at one time in our packet, the side by side, so I, I don't know, I feel like it's our conversation that needs to take place right now.
And, and I agree with you for the majority of the conversation, but let's say we talk for a half an hour or an hour, and a question comes up that we need answered, I wouldn't want our entire conversation to get derailed, because we don't have an answer to a question. And I think phone or electronically, it's more than suitable.
We could ask for her to be available during that time.
That's kind of what I was getting at.
Yeah, just so.
Just be available in case we need her.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep, that, that would work, so let's, let's shoot for two weeks.
May I offer a suggestion?
Sure Doug, yep.
Would it be worth it to review what we have and the information that Michelle presented to us prior to doing anything? Review it all, and then if we have questions, let's list the questions, if we have questions from Walmart, let's list those and get them to Michelle. I mean, we kind of have two things going, where we have Walmart, and we have Cassoot County, self insured. I mean, we kinda have two things going, where we have Wellmark and we have Cassoot County Self Insurance Fund. And the business, the questions for Wellmark need to go to Wellmark, the questions for the fund need to stay with the board supervisors. And I think the first thing that we need to do is review what we have, what our insurance is gonna be this next fiscal year. The information, Amber said it, we've been provided some information on high deductible plans, what all that means. And then maybe we move forward to say, okay, with the information that we have from Wellmark, we can look at the, how it affects the self insurance fund based on some projections. Or if we have or want more information from Wellmark, then we can talk to Michelle. But I, I think just having Michelle present, without us doing our own research on information that's already been provided to us, we're gonna end up wasting her time and maybe not even producing anything. I, I would think that we would need to want to visit with, visit amongst ourselves and review our information that we do have.
And I think that's, yeah, I mean, thank you, and I think that's one of the goals in two weeks here is to review what Michelle has given to us and, and and if we have questions to, to ask those from there.
Or is there a reason why we're gonna wait two weeks because we're kind of?
Well, alright, let's, let's do.
I mean, we are, Adam, I mean, uh.
I, somebody suggested two weeks, that's the only reason.
Well, and that's just what I'm asking, do we need that much time because with time being of the essence.
I don't think so.
For Donna to put this together.
I, I don't think we need to wait two weeks, if we can get all that information that was already provided in our, or folder for next week, by the time, that might help us all have it right in front, I mean, I was gonna look back at emails and try and find stuff, but, um, if we could, if we could get that stuff put all in our folder so it's handy, um, that would help, but otherwise, I don't see a reason to wait two weeks.
Well, let's put it on for next week though, that's fine.
Maybe put it to the bottom of our agenda so we can get our regular business out of the way and then just have an open conversation about health insurance to finish things off.
Okay.
I think we've got the packet, so I think if we can get, since we're all looking at the same thing, I honestly get confused, there's been so many discussions, but I think we need to be.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah.
We need to assure that we're looking all at the same thing and the last that she gave us.
Yeah, and if it's all in our packet, it should be easy, or in our folder, it should be easy, easier to do that.
Right, right. Pull that.
Yep, cause we should have the prices for our current plan and the two alts that she provided, which would've been in that spreadsheet and, and then the details of each plan wrote down and stuff, yeah. Yeah, I think that would be good.
Okay. Plan for next week?
Yeah.
Uh, if nothing else on that topic for today, then let's go to employee handbook review and go back.
Let's.
We'll go back.
Oh, excuse me, yeah, Todd is here, yep, yep. Thanks, Todd, for coming up.
Thanks for helping when you call, I had issue, I was feeling this, so.
Yeah, no worries. Um, for the.
You were sunrise.
Yep, so we did the first reading of the animal control ordinance and we did receive an objection.
Kind of comments.
Or comments, I should say, yeah, um, concerns that this would, our ordinance would disallow TNR programs, which is trap, neuter, return programs in Cassoot County. Um, and what that would entail is, well, here, uh, these programs are a growing practice in Iowa and the US for managing community cat stray or feral populations. These programs involve humanely trapping cats, neutering or spaying them, vaccinating them against rabies and then returning them to their original territory. TNR is considered a humane and effective way to reduce the number of cats in a community as it prevents further breeding and reduces the number of cats entering shelters. And then she just says, I advocate for replacement of much of the language in Cassoot County ordinance as it's written so that the ordinance will not disallow TNR programs. Is there anything, I think our question is, is there anything in the ordinance that would provide a stumbling block for something like that?
And I guess while you're, while you're thinking on that, I guess, I don't, I don't have any issues with adding some language to the ordinance to clarify that, but I don't currently see anything in there that would affect it because we're talking about animals that are.
Do you wanna see a copy that we're not?
Well, I, I was just trying to, the ordinance as it's written, um, the, the language is fine because it's directed at owners, and if it's a feral cat, it's not.
Kyle said that, you're, 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 yeah, that, that was wrong.
If it's a feral cat, there's no owner.
Right.
What I was wondering is, and, and I'm not familiar with the movement, um, I think that there is some, uh, good things about that and, and some bad things about, you know, the, the feral cat population. Um, you know, rabies vaccination only lasts for three years, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah. I think they can be three or one, but yeah, three might not.
But if that is what the board wants, we can add some language to it to, to indicate that this doesn't, um, doesn't apply to the feral cat population, but I think ultimately it's what is the board's position on feral cats.
My position is I don't, well, my, my adventures in Roque, Cassoot County doesn't, I don't see a lot of encounters with feral cats.
I don't, no.
I mean, if feral cat is the town issue, it's, it's, it's not our, it's not our, uh, review.
I mean, occasionally I have a, a feral cat wander on the place for a period of several months and takes care of my mice population, um, but, uh, you know, there's obviously concern about this, that potential disease and that type of thing, and, but again, I, I don't think that this ordinance as written addresses that or even really restricts that, um, again, because it's the owner, um, that is, um, uh, is really restricted. The, the, the only thing I would say is, you know, under section seven, the impoundment, um, here's, here's the thing that we could do there for suggestion, is if there is a feral cat that's caught and no owner is, is capable of being found, you could add language in there as, as opposed to it going kind of in the direction of euthanasia to determine whether, you know, you wanna do the, the neuters, uh, neuter and return or neuter, vaccinate, whatever it's called, um.
Neuter, trap.
Well, we're not trapping it, but yeah, neuter, neuter or spay and, and vaccinate and return, but then you have a cost. I don't know if that's something that, is this grant funded? How's that work under?
Well, they have a grant for twenty-six hundred dollars to pilot the program. I don't know what their plans are after that money.
And maybe.
Well, and may, maybe you put the cats.
That they get, that an option would be they could be turned over to an animal shelter.
Yeah, the, the, you know, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but does Tales, uh, is it Tales of Hope?
Mm-hmm.
Tales of Hope Rescue, is that just strictly cats?
I think so.
I think primarily cats, but I think they do help with some dogs, but I don't think they have facilities to.
And so, I'm, I'm scanning my memory, I don't know, you probably have a better understanding of it, I haven't worked more directly with the sheriff's office in the past, but I don't think they've ever caught cats.
No, not, I mean, I think maybe a few times, but it's mostly dogs.
Cause those cats are hard to catch. Dogs are a little easier, but, um, um, you know, usually dogs are tampered, you can call them in and that type of a thing, although I've seen some high tail to the country.
Yeah.
Uh, but, uh, you know, and maybe you wanna add that to the language of that. Uh, maybe we, we reboot and see if there's different language that's more acceptable, I think it's entirely up to the board, but you know, that, that isn't necessarily directly addressed in here, I don't think that this ordinance affects that, uh, um, situation with the exception of that impoundment, I don't know in, as a practical matter whether that is something that is, is common. Um, so it's, it's entirely up to the board.
Are we able to add or amend something simple to address that in this without having to go through the publication process again?
Sure.
Or would we have to restart it square one?
No, I think that, um, um, I think since you pub, published the summary, you didn't actually publish the ordinance. Uh, you're still on track to be able to pass it, what I would suggest that we do though is, I don't know if the board had made a decision whether you're going to on the two reading track or the three, you know, when you publish summaries, uh, ahead of the first reading, you only have to go through two readings, but if you, uh, want to add language to it, which doesn't impact the actual summary, I think you're gonna be fine, but if we wanna add, uh, you know, the, the, the issue regarding the, the spay or neuter and vaccinate feral cats, um, I think we can do that and still be, still be under the, the notice provisions.
I guess my thought in that regard would be if we added TNR as a definition, um, and then maybe even, um, animal shelter as a option, five oh one, C three, um, for pets.
For cats. Or pets, well, that's all we're really dealing with here.
Yeah, any, any sort of animal shelter that way, whether it was Tales of Hope or another one, that we could add that in under the impoundment section as an option, but I mean, I think you could add a couple sentences and accomplish protecting the goals of this comment, I guess that's, that's my thoughts is, if we can do that without restarting the process, sure, go ahead and do it, but otherwise, I don't think the current ordinance stops what she's asking about.
No, no, I, I, at, at all really, um, you know, other than the impoundment and euthanasia issue, but, uh, we can add, you know, the, the some, I'll come up with some sort of language to address this concern and present it to the board and then, you know, maybe that's, did, did she come in, uh, and discuss it?
She submitted a written.
She, she couldn't be here today.
And, and maybe for the second reading, you, you do that, you have the second reading on track, is it next Tuesday? Okay, alright, um, and, and find out if that's satisfactory.
Well, yeah, I mean.
But you're right, I mean, it is, if it's just an Algonah, it's a city issue, but.
Well, it's not just Algonah, I mean, we, we don't have, I asked, we, we don't think this is putting any jurisdiction or any incorporated down, right, so.
No, it's in the rule.
The other thing, I don't, I'm not to change the subject or change the, I don't want this to turn into, okay, you guys approved TNR, now where's the money to fund it?
Yeah, and that's, that's where, that's where I would say that an option could be turning the animal over to a shelter and they could handle that, but at least.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Twenty-six hundred dollars is gonna go over.
No, no, but that'd be a decision they would have to make is whether they could accept.
And I'd be interested to know how much of that goes off, I, I don't know.
Well, that's just it, I mean, I don't know if I would list TNR in an ordinance specifically, simply is that gonna be a five-year, you know, lasting thing and then replace with something else, is that gonna be a ten-year and then it's suddenly we have language in our ordinance that's obsolete? I, I'm just throwing that out there.
Well, every, is it every five years you have to update the ordinances, so I mean.
Be better to be general.
The list, the list of ordinances, not the ordinances.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not the actual ordinances, so you have to, in essence, through that process, you approve the ordinances that are on the book and, and repeal the ones that are, are, that have been repealed, but.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, maybe their main goal is they probably, you know, being the shelter, they dislike the term, you know, euthanasia.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe before that process, if they were able, if, if we had it in our process to reach out to the shelter.
Prior to euthanasia?
Prior to euthanasia.
You just leave TNR off and just say.
I would.
Just have that, so then that way that shelter would have the option, if they would like to take on that animal, they could before euthanasia, I don't, that's just a suggestion.
So I would say generalize like a five oh one, C three, not, not specifically list the, a business or an organization or a grant program.
Yeah, and I, I would definitely agree with that, listing five oh one, C three, animal shelter in, in general terms, um.
Yeah.
Where do we keep animals that we, and I know we don't do it very often, but.
Um, down, well, I don't know if it's changed, but it used to be down at the Algonah Police Department Pound, down by, um,
Okay.
By the.
I don't.
By the sewage.
Yeah.
I don't like to have anything available there right now because of the construction that's underway, so I think their summer being housed at the whole PEC building, um, that was given to the city, but I don't know what the long-term plan for that is, um, because I think they were talking about having demolition occur for the existing buildings coming up here this summer, right, so I think that's a temporary solution and maybe the wastewater.
Landway.
Ready by then, I'm not sure, but. Yeah, and I'm not entirely opposed to not having TNR listed there, but I don't know if it would completely accomplish the goals for letter and comments if she's concerned that that's something that wouldn't be allowed. So whether we say TNR or any similar program, I think the concept would be the important part, but I don't know. If there's a better way to structure that, I guess. Because if you just call the animal shelter and say, okay, here's the animal, what, what do or can they do with it after that point would probably be their question.
Yeah, a possible solution is if, if it's something that's, um, um, caught, obviously there's an obligation to see if there's an owner. Um, and if there isn't an owner, then the, you know, then it proceeds down that path and, and local shelters or, or whatever, um, rescue facilities could be contacted by euthanasia, um. So, yeah, I'll try and put something together that'll be satisfactory and send it out to you and I know what you think.
Yeah, thanks, Todd.
Yep.
Perfect.
Did the transfer go through?
Yeah, we're gonna do the employee transfer now, yep, since you're here, so we'll go back to that, um. Okay, yeah, discussion decision to.
So then, do we actually, do we approve the first reading today yet and then make changes for the second one?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd make a motion to approve the first reading.
Okay, yep, motion by Stecker, second by Haas. Any discussion on approving the first reading of the animal control ordinance? If not, roll call vote, please.
Haas?
Yes.
Garnon?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Blacker?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
And the second reading will be next week.
Next week, okay. Very good, um, yeah, then we'll go to discussion decision to approve Cassoot County employee transfer. Um, let me get back to that. Okay, is there anything you'd like to, yeah, say regarding this?
No, I mean, I, I, actually, it's the first time I've gone through this process, uh, so, um, Deb, uh, applied for the position and, uh, um, Ten and I had a conversation about it and, um, I'd like her to, uh, take over that full-time support staff role.
Okay.
Can we expand on the specifics?
What do you mean?
The document.
Oh, Deb Nab.
There's, there's not much in our packet.
Oh, I didn't know, I'm sorry, uh, Deb Nab is one of the custodians here, uh, and I don't know how long she's been with the county.
Since twenty-two.
Since twenty-two, uh, and of course I had that position open up, uh, and, uh, she applied. Uh, I talked to her and she's, uh, excited to, to work for my office, I think she'll do a, a good job and there's obviously, no matter who comes in, there's training to do, but I think she'll, uh, she'll do a good job, she has done, as far as I know, a good job for the county and, uh, continue on with that, in that capacity, I feel bad that it, you know, puts fellow elected official in a bad spot, uh, of course, that happened the same way.
Yeah, yeah.
But, uh, that's why I wanted to give her a call and, and, um, no, I think. But that's why I wanted to give her a call and and, no, I think she'll, I think she'll do a quite a good job. I don't know what else I need to.
Just the starting position.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
And your request to start at the starting wage.
So. The 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 start out, the forty thousand, yeah, with the benefits. Yeah, that's the, I, yeah.
Yep.
Why is that different from what we did to the with the sheriff's office? Because they, she did not start off at that starting wage, did she?
No, she she went to what the.
It's a different job description, I guess, is the way I understand it.
Well, I think that's the discussion we've had, different job descriptions.
And I I was not here for that conversation, but.
No, you weren't here. So I guess I.
Yeah, that's.
That, as far as I know, that's what this, I don't even know if it's called the the step.
We call it a wage.
Wage scale.
Wage scale.
Wage scale now. The wage scale for clerks in the the court off in the courthouse starts off at forty and then it goes up to.
Forty.
Forty-five.
And then forty-eight and that's, I think, some change, but.
And, but Deb currently is is a part-time.
No, she's both.
Oh, she is full-time.
Yeah.
But she's hourly.
Oh, that's right. She's hourly versus salary. That's okay.
Cause that's a different job.
Knew there was something different there. Okay, okay.
Well, and I think during our conversations, we had the conversation where this is gonna happen in other departments and in other ways and that wage may change. I guess I I have an issue that she has to start at the year starting wage. Granted, she's doing a different job, but when you go from department to department, you are. And we just approved the transfer. It's a different department, different job and starting at that wage. So to me, I think we're, I don't know, I I don't agree with.
I obviously was not part of the other conversation.
I think it's up to you.
I do.
And Deb.
Yeah, I do think that we need to update this resolution and clarify it for anything in the future as far as transfers. How that happens, I don't know that coming to the board every time someone transfers is a good or bad solution. But I think we need to have that conversation about the concept of it instead of a specific employee at hand.
So I mean, so what you're saying is is start at the more advanced as opposed to the beginning? Because that's the way, that's the way, at least the last two that I've hired, started off at forty, went up.
Right, but they were brand new and.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But this is a situated.
No, the last one that you hired was an employee that had been here before.
Had been here before, but she started it, she started back.
She left and came back, and I guess that's.
Right.
Which our handbook says that's a new employee.
Yeah, right, that's a new one.
That's that's clear.
Yeah.
Her years of service started over for the county.
Unfortunately, yes.
Her years of service are not, they're going to continue, so I guess I I don't, I don't think we should treat this one any different than we did the previous. And the previous, we started off. I can't remember exactly the years of service for her, but yeah, um.
Well, she was in.
She was at the six months.
Across the two.
Six months. She just kind of six month.
So she was gonna get the year at at the time of year of employment and she transferred to a different office, different job description. This is the same thing.
I think the logic in doing that at the time was. The. Or why the board chose to do that was that. You have that probationary period to see is the employee competent, are they gonna stay a length of time, et cetera? I mean, that's the trial period of having an employee and she's already going through that trial period. I think is, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that was the logic of the board's decision, for at least a portion of it.
For the six month.
For the six month versus a starting at the beginning, but.
Which, and she's, you know, this employee has already done that. She's been here since two thousand twenty-two.
She's got, yeah, she's got years under her belt. And what will come with her is vacation and and sick leave and all of that that she has will will transfer over.
Right.
Um, so, you know, really, all we're talking about is, you know, starting, starting wage.
I feel we shouldn't do anything different than what we get.
Two thoughts. And I know the vote was three to one when we when we voted on it a couple weeks ago with the person transferring, the sheriff from the attorney's office to the sheriff's office. Point there was everybody wasn't in the room. Not sure we recognized we were setting policy that day. And second thought is, why do we have to approve an employee transfer if there isn't gonna be individual?
The code says, or I can't remember if it's code or handbook, that says you have to approve employee transfers.
Certainly the handbook, but I didn't research see if it's in the code.
Yeah, so I are.
So you gotta prove the transfer.
Yeah.
So other than the handbook, I appreciate that. Do I think that was the answer to the question, other than the handbook? I think God's in, couldn't this person quit her job as a janitor and apply for the job as attorney? I don't understand the whole concept.
Well.
I I heard the handbook.
Well, if she quit and then applies, she loses her benefits.
That's what happened with what they referred to, although it'd been a year, I think, in between.
Okay.
Then they start over with.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, a year, a year before you get vacation and and.
So so the issue is the pay and benefits. That is the issue here.
Really just the pay, because the benefits will transfer over.
Pay is not addressed in the handbook, how?
It is not.
No, it's not.
And and that's where I think we need to have a conversation about that as far as setting policy, but.
But I.
Well, the policy you'll set in in the the handbook, you you set precedence in which you're setting these parts, but very similar.
And we did set that when we did this last time. I don't feel like any employer should be treated differently if that's the case in this matter, and that is what we did. And. I think that I I just, I think it would be unfair to her to have to start at the starting wage. I think she's been here since two thousand twenty-two. That's.
What's her, what I, this may not be an important point you're not, but what's the, what's what's your pay now?
She's at seventeen dollars an hour right now.
So it's going to forty, just starting at forty thousand is is not a, it's pretty much a wash?
No.
Oh, no, it's an increase.
It's an increase.
Yeah.
Increase. Be about thirty-five right now for full-time hours, forty-eight.
Do you have it in your budget for this year to pay the forty-eight?
Just off of the, you know, shooting from the hip here, I'd have to look, but just with what has happened in my office. For estimation in the current budget year to now, I believe I do.
Yeah, because she would.
I already had, I already had budgeted for that.
Mackenzie's beat, yeah.
Or the the.
Cause she would have hit her one year, so she, yeah.
So I I believe I do.
I guess I'll I'll say this really bluntly. The reason I stayed out of the previous conversation was family connection. And I'm, because of that, I was aware of the individual at hand's knowledge of different systems from previous appointments and all that. Before it was ever discussed in the boardroom. But I think transitioning to a different job is. I mean. You're talking different set of tasks, different set of responsibilities. The position is different in a number of ways and I guess. I I think that should be reflected by the probationary period that we have outlined in the in the sk- wa- wage schedule or wage scale. It's it's a one-year period to get to full pay. We're not talking a substantial amount of time. So.
But and and granted, we're not here and this, we did decide to allow that the last time. And that does set precedence and that would be treating people differently. And that's where I'm gonna leave my thoughts on that. I feel that would be very unfair.
Todd. If I understand elected officials' positions, is this your decision to make and then get approval of the board? So how do you feel about this?
Well, um, I actually see both sides. This was something that I wasn't thinking when I came in here. I do believe that setting the the salaries is the board's call. You know, that's that's in the board's control. I think that looking at it from the standpoint of years of service. You know, you can say, yeah, that that she's overcome that probationary period. But new experience, new job, completely different job skills would also argue in favor of, you know, that probationary period that we have set up in the the wage scale. You know, I think in looking at it from the standpoint, and and I didn't even have the opportunity to talk to her about it. But. Looking at at that situation, you know, it's it's. It's a tough call. I mean, I think there's good good arguments on both sides. You know, and and, you know, I don't, looking at it also from the standpoint of the big picture, you know. If you have someone transferring or someone coming back after serving six years, how's that that fairness? You know, where they have to start at forty and and, you know, the one coming just from a different department, but a completely different job skill. You know, starts off at a higher wage. I mean, I think that there's, there's a lot of. Potential. Problems either way. I mean, I I think arguments that can be made either way, so if that doesn't sound like a punt, that's what I'm doing.
My my favorite word was. I just feel like we should be consistent.
Josh, Carter.
Well, yeah, I was just gonna say.
They've been the quietest here.
It it is a. It is a precedent that was recently set. And so. Right or wrong, that was, that was the precedent set. That being said. It it probably does need to be addressed in a. Policy way or clarified in a handbook as to what what should happen going forward, that or otherwise. But it does. That'd be my, that'd be my biggest concern here is that, I mean, yeah, as a, we are a public employer and and we'd be. Treating people differently. By making one decision a couple weeks ago one way and making a different decision today. That's. I guess that that would be, I guess, right or wrong.
Agreed.
What happened.
Well, I agree with Carter that, you know, we definitely need to address this in the handbook for for future. The way I'm kinda looking at it too is, you know, we need to take the recommendation of the, you know, the other elected officials, that's the head of the department. What they are comfortable with that employee because they, ultimately, is their employee working under them as well. So we need to take that recommendation into account as well.
That's, that's kind of the discussion though, is I don't.
Right.
I don't think, I don't think Todd was aware, coming in here, that there was gonna be much of.
No, not at all.
Discussion and so, so when they come in and say, hey, this is what I request. I mean, you you guys communicate as much as you communicate between department heads, but there's no reason why you should have known. You know, one decision was made at one time and that the decision today potentially is different. So. That, that, I I understand what you're saying, Josh, will take the recommendation, but sometimes the recommendations can be different and cause further problems down the road.
Well, yeah, and 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 that's, you know, like I said, the, when I started off and I said, that's the starting, that's that's the policy that you set. All new employees or or employees that are left and come back start at the new wage scale, which is forty thousand dollars. That's, so that's what I anticipated getting approval for. The other issues I don't disagree with at all. I don't, I have no idea what happened over there because I don't pay attention to all of those venues. I don't watch the video recordings or anything like that. You know, and so, and I don't.
There's nothing on television.
Well, yeah. And so, you know, the 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 reality is, I I guess I wasn't prepared to answer that. What do I think on that issue? I don't know at this point in time. And looking at it, that's what, why I did what I did. I, like you said, I don't know what what the the starting was over there and how that was calculated, what discussions you guys had on that. But hearing what I've heard today, obviously, there is a difference in how that was was done. Why? Don't know. That's your call. But, you know, given that, I think, you know, there's there's now, what's called into question is, you know. Should I reassess and determine whether or not the recommendation should be a different number? I don't know, but obviously, what I said earlier, you know, no matter what my recommendation is, and Josh, you're actually right on point. I mean, yeah, you take those recommendations, you don't always agree with them, but that's your call. And so how you want to start this. You know, the the pathway down this precedent, which obviously is probably going to have to be set out in the handbook, because it's an issue that that's come up now twice within a short amount of time. That's a decision that that you guys need to actually determine.
Well, and and maybe another piece that hasn't been said yet is. I'm not exactly sure why, but I I don't believe there's been consultation with the attorney that helped draft this and put this together. I mean, we we worked with Alors and Cooney to establish this wage scale and or this wage schedule. And when we have an issue or a situation like this that has come up now twice. I feel that should have been maybe the first thing before even being on the agenda is we should say, how do we deal with this situation? So that we can set policy appropriately rather than setting it on an individual basis and building precedent off of one conversation because.
I don't know how you're gonna discuss it with an attorney before it's on the agenda, before you even know about it.
Well, not not necessarily discuss with the attorney before having it on the agenda, but discussing with the attorney before making a decision maybe.
Wow.
Especially in regards to one employee.
Well, and and that's where it's difficult, I mean, because you did excuse yourself from the room. And that was not a discussion that we had, but it was also your choice to excuse yourself from the room and not have any discussion about that. And the what was decided in the boardroom that day, it did set precedence. It did set precedence and and granted, yeah, maybe if you look back, maybe we could have done something different, but we didn't. Because of the years of service and that was kind of the point of this whole resolution and now we have it again. Well, I don't feel like we can make a different decision. Does it open up the the discussion like, okay, we need to outline this in the handbook better? Yeah, maybe then at that point we can ask advice on some language, but right now to to go backwards and say, oh, let's talk to the attorney. Well, it's not gonna change the one that we did before this, like two weeks ago. So I feel like that would be unfair going forward. Yeah, we probably better have the conversation and I do believe the employee handbook review is on there, on the agendas today, so.
I do want to point one thing out in the the, in my support staff and length of service and time on the job. I mean, if something is decided that, you know, prior service has a completely unrelated. Job duty for the county is taken into consideration when setting the wage. I have one that still hasn't, who's had six years of in-my-office experience that left for a period of time and came back and had to start over. And that that too would work at as an unfair situation or inequitable situation. Because, you know, you gotta take that experience, I'm looking at it from the private sector. No matter what what job is out there that's that's being, that a person's being considered for employment, you know. Commensurate with experience is a big thing in making a determination as far as wage. So someone who's been. So someone who's been working in the same job area and they come in, they'll come in at a higher wage because of that experience. Someone who has no experience or zero experience will start out at a lower wage. That's just the way it's done outside of the confines of this building. So I think that that's also something to consider because Jackie, who's been with my office for a long period of time, like I said, you know, changed jobs for a brief bit and came back, started over. If, you know, if that starts off at the one-year rate, that's more. And with no job experience in what I'm going to be asking of her. So that needs to be taken into consideration. How that's taken into consideration, I don't know. I look like I said, I wasn't prepped for this, but that's something that I encourage the board to strongly consider.
Well, and in that regard, whether it's official precedent or not, I mean, to some degree, maybe that was part of setting precedent because we had an employee with experience in that position that started back at the beginning. I understand it's a new hire as defined by the handbook. But, I mean, it opens up a big can of worms as far as if does that pay get adjusted to accommodate for the previous experience all the way back to when she came back?
What it used to be, what it used to be before the wage scale is we were, we did have that flexibility. So if someone applies and they have, and I'll just use my office for an example, they have twenty years of legal secretary experience, certainly is worth more, if you're looking at it from an employer, than someone who's coming in with zero or very little experience. And so, you know, once that wage scale happened, it turned into, you've taken that off of our plates. We don't have that. And I think, you know, a lot of the others who've been in situations where they've had to hire employees have come in and said that, you know, that's really not, you know, something that we can take into consideration. And, and I think to a certain extent, and I'm not gonna say that's one hundred percent, but to a certain extent, I think that's why our numbers of applicants have been down. Because that's something that, you know, no matter what. I mean, I could be someone who's got loads of experience and I'll be starting off at the same level as someone who has no experience. Regardless, it doesn't, it's not something, it's not a factor we can consider. And so, yeah, I think there's issues at, it is what it is and we have to live in that situation. But, you know, that's what we're talking about here. And I think that that would work in an equity that could be, could be something that I hear.
No, and absolutely. I understand that one hundred percent. You probably will. But, and I think maybe it needs to be addressed. I do, I think it needs to be addressed. I don't know if it was questioned in here. I don't believe it was, was it? When did Jackie come back?
Six months, nine months, about six months.
So it was, it was, yeah, okay. So it wasn't, that part wasn't.
Shortly after McKenzie started, about six months after McKenzie started, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think it was brought up in here.
Okay.
And I do agree that we need to, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, talk to Aylers and Coonies about our wage scale and resolution because their whole point, their biggest point with the resolution was that the ending wage is what's important, is that somebody starting new has to have the same capability to make that ending wage over, it doesn't matter the period of time. As, so that's the biggest point of it, is that that ending wage is capable no matter when you start. If it's five years after that, the only difference can be longevity. So I think that's Aylers and Cooney's whole point is that ending wage. Yes, we set a starting six months, so as a baseline, but I don't think that's the point of that resolution. Does that make sense?
I don't, I don't think, I don't think we have an open door as far as a time period.
Well, no, I'm not saying that, but I'm just saying that I think that we need to clarify that with them.
Yeah, and that's.
And the broader show, to piggyback off what Tammy says, it's not just in my office. So in other words, okay, we have, we have a, you know, I mean, I presume that there's been, you know, hires here in all of the other elected officials' offices that started off and went through that wage scale. And then if someone starts off not having to go through that wage scale, a completely unrelated thing, I think there's probably gonna be other offices that are gonna say, wait a minute, that could be an issue or it's a problem. You know, so, and then you can even cross, each office is different, you know. What, you know, what someone does in Tammy's office is different than what someone does in my office. You know, and, you know, there's a lot of that. And I understand the whole idea of trying to make it fair and equal and that. But then, you know, you have, you have, you have to be consistent. And that's, that's one of the issues that I think could rear its ugly head down the road is when you have, you know, a person who is, you have this, you have job descriptions and, you know, you have to be very cognizant of the fact that, you know, you want the job descriptions and the pay to be very much similar, right? As opposed to, you know, me, for example, you know, you have to be a licensed attorney. I mean, that's pretty clear. But, you know, there's a lot of blurred lines between, you know, the support staff in Tammy's office, the support staff in Nick's office, the support staff in Karen's office and the support staff in Roger's office. And what the core concept of their job duties are. And, you know, if you get into that dangerous slippery slope of, okay, you know, this is a very similar job description with maybe one or two things different, so we're gonna pay them more, I think you have a little bit of a problem there, potentially.
To be honest, I have questions. And I don't know, I don't know if I feel comfortable going one way or the other in the moment.
Well, she starts the twenty-second, I believe.
Yeah, next week.
That's what I was gonna ask, is when?
You know, and I would like to have a conversation with her too because obviously this affects her. But, you know, I think the concept of what we're here today for, in most part, I guess, depending on who you're talking to, which one's the major part, is that you approve the transfer. But at what wage? That's the question.
And I think we could have that on the agenda next week.
Could we do that?
I think, I mean.
Improve the transfer today?
She'd be there a day, you know, if she's okay with that.
Or just put it off till next week. I mean, I get the idea that you guys don't have any problem with the transfers, just we should have done.
No, yeah.
Well, we can approve the transfer today. I mean, why would we put up and approve the transfer? You know, but we need to have further discussion on the wages and that discussion. We do.
So in the meantime, do you want me to contact Aylers and Cooney and see if they're available on Tuesday for questions? Or what, do you want me to get clarification of anything or what do you think? No, you're okay with?
I don't think we need to contact them at this point. I think that we need to have the discussion and then going forward when we do the handbook, that's when we have the discussion.
Okay.
I mean, if we were gonna have the discussion with them, we should have had it two weeks ago.
Okay.
I think we should have had the discussion two weeks ago, but skip, the fact that it was skipped at that point doesn't entail that it should be skipped now. So I think they should be part of the conversation.
So then are you gonna go back retrospect then and possibly change what we did two weeks ago? Because of that conversation?
I don't know how you can, I don't, I don't know. But in the same token, we have Jackie who came back with years of experience in the exact position that she is and she started out at the beginning. So whether that should have been vetted more thoroughly at the time of the conversation, at the last conversation about this topic or not is open for discussion. But, I mean, there's issues both ways that could be looked at retrospectively. I mean, you could be talking back pay for Jackie from the point she was rehired here to the differences in levels. I mean, there's, and maybe we just say that it is what it is for now, but this is what our policy will be moving forward for any situation it applies to. I think that's a conversation we need to have, but.
Yeah, and, you know, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I don't think you guys had in front of you the rehire at all because that was mine and it was based on the handbook. I mean, it's clear in the handbook. You know, and so how that's addressed, yeah, it can be a topic of future discussions. I don't necessarily disagree with that policy. I mean, there can't be this, well, I'll go see what it's like somewhere else and come back and, you know, no change. I mean, you just can't have that necessarily. I don't know if you have the need to go all the way back to the start, especially if they've been here, say, for a long period of time and you know they've built that up. So, you know, those are things that I think all of the department heads need to be a part of because, you know, it's going to eventually affect every one of the offices. It just affected mine first. And so in looking at that, I think those are discussions that we need to have and especially now that we're doing the handbook, we need to address. As far as right, the immediate concern, I think we just need to, you know, find out the information to answer your questions and to make a determination.
Well, and I didn't wanna interrupt you when you were talking there, so I held the thought. But, I mean, the concept of you don't want employees leaving to see if something, if there's greener pasture somewhere else and then come back with no consequences, I think that could apply even internally. I mean, you could have someone go from the recorder, treasurer, attorney, auditor's office, they're all on that same scale. But say one thinks the job duties over here might be a little bit more suited to their skill set or whatever, and then they get there six months or a year later and decide they wanna go back. I mean, I don't know that we want people jumping back and forth between departments every six months or a year because there's an opening over here and then we publish for it and spend a bunch of money going through the process of hiring someone and then they go back or vice versa, like, I think it sets a dangerous precedent.
It's everybody's right to apply for whatever job is out there. Doesn't matter if they're an employer or not an employer. If the job is available, they have every right to do that. You cannot, nothing you can write in a handbook or policy or talk to an attorney about is gonna change that. It's their right.
It's their right to apply for the job, but the starting wage is what, and the probationary period and the one-year pay is what we have set as board policy. So if they wanna apply for it based on what's been acted on by the board, feel free.
So next week?
No, I think we should approve the transfer because nothing, that move is gonna change that trace.
I agree, and we need to.
We need to have further talk on the.
I just didn't, yeah.
Yeah, we need to do that.
Yes.
Deb is being hired. I mean, we can approve her transfer, but we do need to have the discussion on further things here, so.
Okay.
Do you want them in the same order? Animal order and soul?
Okay.
Yep, sounds good. Okay, we all need a motion to approve the transfer then.
Oh, move.
Okay.
More second if you were doing it.
Okay, motion by Garmin? Are you seconding that?
I was just saying we would need a motion.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Well, I'll second.
Second by Wachter then, to approve the employee transfer. And any further discussion on that?
Is it gonna be outlined in our motion? The wage will be discussed or set separate to this motion?
No, 'cause it wasn't on the agenda for wage. So I don't think we need to, but whatever you think.
No, I think just the transfer and, because the wage is something that we can discuss on that, but you'll have to approve separately anyway, so.
Okay.
I just am asking because I think it was done all together.
Oh, I don't know what you're gonna pass.
Wage and transfer in the other discussion, so I'm just for clarification sake.
Well, I guess we're verbally clarifying here that we're gonna talk about it next week. I don't see how it would.
The official minutes is what most people like to reference the act of.
Well, I can put that after the motion too, that.
Not what my motion was going to be. My motion was to approve the transfer.
Yeah.
Is what my motion was.
I mean, I guess after the motion.
So do you wanna change it? You can, so be amended?
I'd make a motion to amend that we add wage will be discussed and set separately.
Okay. Motion for, to amend, the, motion to amend the motion. Is there a second to that amendment?
Sure.
Okay, second by Haas, discussion on the amendment. Clarification is fine, I don't know either way, but. Okay, then roll call vote on the amendment, please.
Haas?
Yes.
Garmin?
No.
Stecker?
Yes.
Wachter?
Yes.
Nav?
Yes. Okay, now we're back to the main motion. And do you wanna read that then for clarification?
Yeah, so, the main motion will now be to approve the employee transfer of Deb Nav to the county attorney's office and the wage will be discussed and set separately.
Okay, everyone understand the motion then? And roll call vote on the original motion.
Can I offer, can I offer, you know, to my original motion?
We can take friendly amendments, one more, yep.
All right, I would like to amend that and actually what it says here on the agenda was to approve the transfer. So if we're going to put, and I don't know how to word it, but if we're going to put items about the salary in the motion, it doesn't really say that on the agenda. I know we got into that discussion because the question was asked. But the actual item on the agenda today is to approve that transfer. So I would like to amend that to just state what it is.
You're amending it back to your original language there?
Yes, I am.
I think that's out of order.
I don't know that that's a.
Show me where it's out of order.
An amendment?
It was just voted on.
Todd, do you have any insight on that?
No one ever accused me of being a parliament member.
How did the motion, how were the motions read that when we did this a couple of weeks ago? Can we go back to the.
Sure, yeah. How the motion was in the minutes? Yes, absolutely. You're back.
I believe they were separate, but maybe not.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but we'll find out. So let's see if I can find the right week. Was it the first of April, maybe?
Or the last of March, I can't remember.
Yeah.
It was March twenty-fifth.
March twenty-fifth? Okay.
And it'll state in the agenda that it was spelled out, approve Kusud County employee transfer from one department to another with salary transfer.
And this does not say that.
And this one, it was motion by Wachter and second by Garmin to approve the transfer of McKenzie Colash from the county attorney's office to the sheriff's office manager position and set her beginning salary at step two of the office manager salary of fifty thousand and at her one-year anniversary with the county on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, her salary will go to step three of fifty-three, three eighty-six.
All right, so.
So it does address.
Definite difference the way it was on the agenda to where it was and that was not part of the agenda. I don't feel it should be part of a motion if it was not part of the agenda, the salary.
I was trying to just to see what, how to handle the.
Well, I mean, it's just specifically not what's on the agenda, so I mean, it's.
Well, would it make a difference? 'Cause you said you can't go back to the original, would it make a difference? Well, would it make a difference, 'cause you said she can't go back to her original, would it make a difference if she made the motion to approve the transfer and not set salary till next week? I don't know. No, okay, sorry.
I don't know.
I just feel like you said you put something in a motion that wasn't part of the agenda.
The, the minutes included the salary last time.
But so did the agenda.
And so did, so did the agenda, and so this time it did not include the salary. I think, I don't know, I think we're dying on some hills that maybe we don't need to die on here, just my opinion.
Follow our agenda.
So.
I mean, that's really not a hill to die on, it's, it is our agenda.
It's still part of the conversation that we had today, it's.
Well, and I honestly, looking at it from the standpoint of, um, notice to the public in the agenda clarity, transfer, I think would would, um, I think the discussion of pay and salary, which was unanticipated is inextricably bound to the, the discussion of the transfer. Different than the transfer over there, because that would have been a transfer in salary. We obviously are not transferring her salary, because she's not on salary, she's hourly uh, to my office, and my office works on salary only. You know, I think to, to Anders' point, you know, the, the, the transfer is what it is, you're gonna, you're approving the transfer of Deb Nav from the Auditor's Office to my office, that's it. What the, the, the pay is going to be is, is something that can be discussed separately, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, um, next week, because there's a question as to how it's going to be implemented for wage um, uh, scale. And so you know, I, I, I didn't find with just approving the transfer. And we can have that discussion regarding the salary, I don't think by saying you're approving the transfer, you're, you're saying that, well, okay, the, the salary is going to be transferred, because it's not. She's going to, she's going to go to my, my wage scale. But we can have that discussion if you guys want to approach
Yeah.
a different you wanna approach differently that, that, that job position that she's transferring into. You know, as to whether or not you're gonna classify her as a hire on the wage scale because of her years of service or not. That's, that's something that you can put on the agenda for next week and be specific about that, so that there's no confusion that you are saying it's okay for Deb to go from Tammy's office to my office.
And my intent with my motion was not that we were setting a salary, it was simply approving that transfer.
Yeah.
It, it, it doesn't, my motion did not say, oh, that's gonna say she started at this wage, that was not what my motion was.
And the motion includes the decision that was presented on the agenda, the minutes are a clarification of the discussion, so I'm gonna I, um, so, all right, Amber, I'm gonna actually offer the second friendly amendment here and just say, let's let's amend it to say approve of the employee transfer and reflect in the minutes that the salary will be discussed at, at the next week.
That's, that's basically
I know, but you're, you're.
Amendment does, and it's already been acted on.
But I think she's concerned about the decision aspect, I, I'm just.
It's, it's specifically saying that we're not making a decision on that in correlation with this motion, that's it's just outlining it for the record.
We couldn't make a decision on that based upon what was on the agenda.
Okay, I, I, I didn't, I didn't make an amendment, so if there's no second, let it die, but.
Oh, so you, okay, so can we have another, can you make another one?
You can, yeah, make up the two.
But she made the second one, I read.
A second, so.
You weren't amending language, so I, I, well, you were taking.
I was, if you, well, I mean, I'm, I don't wanna sit here and make the same deal. But the only thing my motion was meant to do is just approve the transfer. That's what was on the agenda, that's what I feel the minutes should reflect is, um, based upon what was on the agenda. That's, I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and argue or anything, but that puts.
Todd even pointed out, when it comes to the agenda and the ability of the public to be notified about the conversation, the law was followed in any nature of what our conversation is. It's, the two topics are directly linked together.
Well, I think the discuss, the discussion was linked to it.
Yeah.
I don't know, obviously you're not gonna make a decision on it, but, uh, I don't know that it has to necessarily be reflected in the minutes, because it's it's, uh, it's I guess, you know, reflected in the minutes to the extent that you're gonna be discussing it on Tuesday next week. You know? I mean, I, I think what you have for the motion on the, the, the table now is approve the transfer. Starting salary will be discussed and decided at the next board meeting, is that what I understood?
Well, that's what Kyle's was, but then Amber made the motion to just, to amend it to just approve the employee transfer. So to me, that's what's on the table right now.
No, that was never seconded or voted on, so it's not.
I don't know.
Nobody asked for a second.
I, I didn't.
I, you called it out for it.
I.
Yeah, I don't know that you can go back, I mean, like I said, I'm not a parliamentarian, but, uh, I don't know that you can go back to the original. Maybe you can.
I've never seen that done, but I.
One of those drawers up there has Robert's rules.
I don't.
For two hours to, to bridge to this decision.
I think that's something to, something to look into, 'cause I've, I've never seen that.
Improper amendments, chapter twelve, section twenty-two. Number two, it says, "One that merely makes the adoption of the amended question equivalent to a rejection of the original motion." No, no, that wasn't, I was just starting to get to that.
Well, regardless, is there a second to my amendment? If not, we'll let it die.
Okay, I'll, I'll, for today's purposes, and this is not law, so just, this is just order of meaning. For, for today's purposes, I'm gonna allow Amber's second amendment, is there a second to it? And hearing none, uh, the motion to amend will fail, and then we'll go back to vote on the original motion. As it was amended. And we'll do a roll call vote, please, on that.
Okay, Haas?
Yes.
Garmin?
No.
Stecker?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Nav?
Yes. Okay, motion carries unanimous, employee transferred.
Not unanimous.
Or sorry, motion didn't carry, I don't know what I said, yeah, four to one, and employees transferred, let's have the discussion on wage next week.
All right, now, and then I'll also, um, work on some language for that ordinance and get that off to you, so, all right?
Thanks, Todd.
Yep, thank you.
Felt like I was growing roots.
Okay. Employee handbook review, come back to that, am I right on that?
Can we take a break?
You wanna take a final break?
Yes.
Okay, let's do that.
Sorry. And then you guys get a sentence too.
Yep, yep, I was just thinking about that.
I will be, go ahead.
One of our drainage districts did a bunch of work, uh, last year. Rachel did.
You know what district it is?
Yes, it's one-one-four. And Rachel did a very nice job and everything, but the ruin, they dredged out the, uh, creek or and, um, nothing was reseated. And I'll show you.
Do you know what location, like township in second when you're talking?
Well, township, it's bum creek, and, and, uh, it's just not gonna go back, I mean, you know, the dredge, dreads out the creek and, uh, you know, six, eight inches of dirt on what on the grass up there, and I got pictures of.
We had a CRP before.
No, this is, this was this hay ground I used it for, and, uh, I, uh, it was brom grass, and like I said, there's probably two to three acres that needs reseeding.
Okay.
And I, I feel the drainage district should basically pay for that.
So.
I, 'cause I've had other work done on other drainage districts that be reseeded.
Yeah, the short answer to that is if it's an engineer project where we go through the public hearing process and all that, typically damages are included for that, but if it's a smaller repair that's just done through a repair request, we don't do anything for damages on those, and that would just be the owner's responsibility.
So look at me.
That's, I mean, and I've had dozens, if not hundreds, that were called to that category.
Okay.
And that's, that's been longstanding board policy, and that's.
I was, like I said, I just thought the, the district should put it back the way it was.
So I think if this wasn't an engineering thing.
No, I mean, I'm not aware of anything for one-fourteen.
Well, at a certain level of pay, or a certain level of cost, we've got higher engineers.
If it's over fifty thousand dollars.
Forty-seven thousand to do this.
So it would, it would have been under the public hearing threshold, and it would have been under the threshold required to engineer.
So it's my responsibility.
It just, it is what it is.
I'm new here too.
Don't seem right, but that's, that's the law and so on.
And, yeah, I mean, that's, that's what we've historically done on all of our other stuff of that, of that nature, yep.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
I had to get up.
I see, I'm new here, Mark, but one, I'm new here too, one of the, one of the processes would be, I think it's probably Amber's, Amber's district.
I checked with her, and she said, well, it was not part of the bid, is what she told me.
So that, that probably would have been something Roger would have handled before the end of the calendar year, if it was done last year.
Right.
So, yeah.
But I, I talked to whoever the supervisor was before she was, and, and basically he said, well, we wait and see what goes back and what doesn't, but, I don't know.
All right, yeah, no.
Now you're only talking for, uh, three, four hours about it, but.
Yeah, I mean, and, and you would have made that all.
Well, I think that we and I need to sit down and then probably get in the shelf together, get our questions. I got a little bit of an idea that, how to start the conversation, but still gotta have a position.
But I'm here all week, I've got, next day.
Thursday?
Thursday, I, yeah.
If you talk to Michelle as far as, you set twenty-eight or twenty-nine, what day is it?
May twenty. It's one till Wednesday, one till Thursday, I guess I was gonna ask him if anybody had a preference.
How many days have you been running?
But they know twice.
Do you want snow?
May twenty eighth or twenty ninth, I would say the first weekend. Wednesday or Thursday, I don't think I have a preference.
Let's do twenty-nine.
For your guys, that, that will impact that.
And that'll be seven o'clock, right?
Yeah.
'Cause we'll be on four ten o'clock, so they'll check in at six-thirty, and, you know. I mean, the, the guys from Ledge Art might be, it might be seven oh-five, but that'll give them opportunity.
Okay.
I don't know, we might have to talk about it, or we can talk about the fund, so that they can understand.
Well, I would consider it, I mean, I'm just gonna ask you, 'cause I think it would be really sad.
I thought it was gonna be the last one back.
Me too. I filled up my water, brought it back, and then I was going to the bathroom, I was for sure, I was keeping a laugh.
I made more coffee in the break. I.
In the break room?
Yeah, because I needed more.
You, uh, you should have told me, I would have made it for you, I took the last cup, I talked with Christina and Scott, and they said they didn't need anything, I mean, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, don't apologize, you can't read my mind. I just thought, well, I could probably drink this pot myself, so I'm gonna make it, I needed more.
You're gonna make, you're gonna drink another pot.
Probably not, but I could if I needed to.
Well, and that's why you typically don't, even on engineer projects, you don't do seeding, but we pay damages or landlords who live themselves. So if they have a certain type of seed for.
So there's no concept at all of, of the contractor trying to do anything at all, it's just a question of they don't.
They do the inside of the ditch bank or whatever, that, that would be, or they should be reseeding, but not not outside of the ditch bank, if they're still.
So I've asked this, I'm gonna change the subject quickly, I've asked this before, but this notion of always starting with me on a vote, that, that has to be that way?
You don't like that, Howard?
Unless they ask for a reverse roll call, that's the way it's.
Why can't we just, uh, alternate?
Just pass.
Well, I heard that done once, when I was watching before I was elected, yeah, I'll do it this time, you do it next time, you do it next time, I think we'll do it. No, I don't like it, that's how that's ridiculous.
I, I would tell you, I like sitting here versus sitting down there too.
Okay, that's enough of that.
I started it off down the coast of that.
I have plenty of that, my first four hundred years.
Plenty of what?
Yeah, and don't always don't know, that's why I asked the question.
Yep.
If we have to do it that way, show me why we have to do it that way.
Can Howard ask for a reverse roll call?
Yeah, absolutely, you can.
Yeah, you can ask for a reverse roll call.
Or he can pass.
Yeah.
Okay, that's enough of that, so.
But even, even with the reverse roll call, and I didn't get very fussy about it when I was chair, but typically the chair calls last always. So, I mean, and that.
A chair doesn't, I think even in a.
And again, in a.
Last year, there was definitely times.
In an assembly larger than twelve, the chair is not supposed to even have a vote.
At all.
At all.
They just, they don't typically vote, they're the tiebreaker.
Right.
Board minutes, I've read board minutes when there's only three, three people and the chair doesn't vote. Two people.
Depends, depends on how you use Robert's rules.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, that's the way board, board, different boards.
'Cause I think a lot of times the goal of the chair under Robert's rules is just to run the meeting and and have, have, have order. Cause I think a lot of times the goal of the chair under Robert's rules is just to run the meeting and, and have, have, have order. And I, I'm not even always a tiebreaker, but depending on, on the situation, but, yeah.
Too bad you got one.
Either way, that's the precedent set. Cause I guess the chair votes here, and, and I think in most counties.
It's a purpose of the body.
I don't know any county that, I don't know a county that the chair doesn't vote, but, anyway. So, okay, so we are up to, yeah, employee handbook review, and Donna, go ahead.
Again, that was brought up at department head, um, I know we've been talking about the handbook, we've done referencing the handbook as for the last conversation. So I sent it out, and then I guess I think we were just gonna discuss on steps to move forward, is my understanding.
Oh, so we're not actually like looking at it or anything?
I did get that impression, I don't know if that's, I mean, if there's something that stands out, the, I didn't get much feedback from department heads. But again, it wasn't sent out till Thursday, I think, so, I don't know how much they looked at it.
Is that, I know at one time we were going through the handbook.
We kind of started that.
Section by section.
Section by section, and then it kind of, I think with election and budget, we, we did not plug it in.
Okay.
So, I think we were up to section two the last time, but I think we need to kind of maybe make it a focus.
Especially going into summer, a little bit less on the agenda at times, um, and maybe, uh, maybe we do start going through some of those sections again, starting that process.
We've got them, I mean, obviously you're familiar with it, but you two aren't obviously in the-
With transfers and stuff being in section one, and at having new board members, you think we need to start over?
I, I was-
I don't think that would be a bad idea, I mean-
Not gonna take that long?
No, I think maybe we should.
But I think that's a better, yeah.
And maybe, is it, you know, good, a good idea to take it just a section at a time, some of the conversations may go that-
Yeah, that's what we were doing.
Instead of going, it seems like sometimes you can just kind of go all over the place, then you, you're right back to, we didn't know anything, you know?
No, that's what we were doing. And I, yeah, I think we should start that process and continue it, um, again.
Yeah, I think the biggest piece of what we talked about at the department head meeting was what the status is and where we go from there, how we move through it. So, I guess, I don't know if we just make a point of touching base with all the department heads to review any sections that may apply to them and come back and think some suggestions and give a certain timeframe, whether it's two weeks or a month from now, and then we go through it as a board in a, in a workshop fashion.
Can't you just, like if it's on, uh, agenda for discussion, decision, section one, let the department heads be here for that discussion, and then they can come with any changes or, yeah, at that time. Otherwise, you're gonna drag it out for a long time and possibly not get any input.
Agreed.
Yes, if it's specific enough, if, and if we do that communication, like we said, we can, you know, you can send out an email like you did before and say, you know, we request your presence, and if you have any input on this, we'd like you to say it at that time.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's second, oh.
Okay. Sounds good, yeah, we'll start the process.
So do you want it on next week already for section one?
No.
I would not.
Oh, next week is the hearing, yeah.
Yeah.
Or what else is, I don't want it on next week.
Okay, how about, um-
Unless it rains, then we can do whatever you want.
How about the twenty ninth, April twenty ninth?
That, that's fine.
Two weeks or three?
You've been popping this around for three years?
Yeah, it needs to get-
Yeah, but it doesn't need to be done during planting season.
Well, if we're just, well, okay, and that's fine, but if we're just doing one section, we shouldn't be spending five hours on that.
You should spend a lot.
Do a, do a small section on April twenty ninth.
I mean, I think you could probably say a, a timeframe, a minimum of a timeframe, because I respect that, but then we just keep on dragging out, then it'll be like, everybody's on vacation.
Yeah, section one's.
We'll be back to, I, I don't know if it is.
Since we already talked about pushing a couple things to next week, I would suggest that maybe two weeks from today, and then, um, yeah, deal with the section, and if it gets over half an hour, we call it or whatever, just so that we, and hopefully that'll keep our conversation a little more orderly too, but say, we're, this is all we're gonna spend on it.
Well, and I can put, do section one point one to one point five, because that's like three pages.
Worth.
I mean, we got four B's.
And some of that we're not even gonna-
Yeah, so, we'll just do one point one to one point five.
April twenty ninth.
Is employee handbook, what you had, had out in orientation or whatever did you?
Yeah, I bet, you know, I can send you guys the updated, I sent it to department heads, so.
Yeah, can we get like an electronic copy of that?
I, I can forward mine to them, I have it up right now.
Yeah.
I'll forward it.
That would probably be more relevant, cause we have a lot of markups from that.
I'll forward it right now.
But again, as case in point, your last conversation, there is a lot of digesting of that, and sometimes I think we don't have clear understanding of, if it says this, then who really has the need to, to inter discuss it? Or maybe the relevancy, people tend to avoid the relevancy, then we get into the handbook, then it goes multiple directions. Even in that last topic with transfer, I had previously written that it was vague, but then also you spell it out too much.
Right.
You, you get lost.
Good to go there then?
Yep.
Okay. Well, thanks Donna, have a great day.
You bet.
Thank you, Donna.
Bye bye.
Okay, uh, up to you Doug then, discussion decision for construction in the right of way.
Yeah, we have, uh, three requests for construction in the right of way. Uh, the first is outgoing municipal utilities, who is, um, installing fiber optic all around the town of Algonia. So this is kind of what I call the urban area of Casu County. Uh, there is a location map, so it's southwest, it's going up towards the airport, to the northwest, going southeast and northeast. Um, quite a few roads. Ultimately, I would recommend that the board would approve of this request. Get this. There you go, Tammy.
You guys monitor this at all when they're doing work?
We try to, um, with some, um, some people in Algonia Municipal Utilities is one. We have a good working relationship with them and know what's going on. There's other times where it might be a little bit larger company who hires a contractor, and it's a little bit more difficult for the communication. So, yes.
So we're, so we talked about it in the motion here, it says plowing and boring.
Right. We try to determine it, we try to determine where all of our cross pipes are at, where there's any drain, possibility of drainage tile. Make sure that they get that. Having said that, there seems like there's always a, there's always something that appears.
Need a motion to approve the construction in the right of way then?
First one?
The first one.
Just the first one, first one here for one in municipal utilities, yep. A motion by Haas, I'll second it. Any discussion on the motion? If not all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous.
Okay, the second request has to do with, uh, the construction of the bridge up at Michelson Marsh, which it has not been let, um, but we have been talking with different utility companies and Tectonica Burke Communications, there is a line there that will need to be removed before the bridge is reconstructed, and that's what this permit is for, so I would recommend that, uh, the board would approve of this permit as well.
Good. Motion by Stecker.
I'll second.
Second by Garmin. And any discussion on the motion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous.
And then the last request is actually a line that, um, there was a problem. It occurred in the winter, they laid the cable on top of the ground to resolve the issue, and now they are asking to reinstall or to install new, um, and I would recommend that the board would approve of this request as well.
So, okay, motion by Stecker. Need a second?
I'll second.
Second by Wacter. Any discussion on the motion? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous.
So we got three of them here, Carter. All right, thank you.
You bet. Assuming that is all in the right of way?
That is all the requests for work in the road right of way.
Okay, we can go into discussion then.
Uh, yes, um, I guess first thing, tractor mowers, we had some issues last fall. Uh, the members that are, were board members last fall, where we had some axles breaking on some tractors. Um, through a lot of discussion, uh, no one would take ownership, why they broke. We had, uh, representatives from John here, we had representatives from Tiger. I made a decision, I asked Tiger to just give us price to go back to our regular winged mower. Uh, it's lighter, um, there would be a cost per tractor of twenty six thousand dollars. That's for the equipment and the installation, and I decided to do that, um, so we can continue on with those tractors and those mowers. So, you will see in the future that happening. Uh, the machine one forty five that was involved with a accident with a train, um, an insurance agent has looked at that. We have not had any, uh, information from that insurance agent, uh, whether, uh, what to do with that. However, we started using it yesterday, and we noticed, uh, it would be what's called a tilt blade, uh, cylinder, that mole board underneath of it, the cylinder that rotates that started leaking. Whether that's due to the accident, or whether that is due just from wear and tear, the machine's a two thousand three model, so it does have some age on it. However, we parked it, we're not gonna use it until we hear back from the insurance company to see what's going on with that. Uh, DD project, uh, DD four lateral four, they started bore, or started work to bore across ninety avenue south of Sway City. They started that yesterday. Um, we did last week, there was a controlled burn that burnt part of a bridge. I'd like to just show some photographs, um, to the board. Uh, we did report this to law enforcement, and law enforcement, uh, did talk a little bit about, uh, who was doing the, uh, burning. But this is, uh, it'd be on the north line of section twelve of Garfield Township, one hundred and fifty street, just east of seventy avenue.
So the north side, north side of that section?
North side is section twelve, yes.
Of Garfield?
Garfield Township, yes. So, this is a photograph of the road looking west, and you can see the burning. There's a drainage ditch there, some road ditch, uh, that burnt, so it's on the south side of the bridge. Uh, the first thing, this would be the southeast corner, you can see where we had a pile here and some wing plank that caught on fire, and just if you look at it close up, you can see where the wing plank actually burnt. And this next photo, you can see where that pile actually burnt. So, uh, there is, if you look on this pile here, uh, there's a tie rod that goes across. There's a tie rod on that pile as well. So, uh, we're gonna have to do some work in order to repair that. And then, if you look at the southwest side, you can see there's supposed to be a guardrail post every six foot, three inches. There's not one here, and there's not one here, and we got a close up picture of that. It's in the ground, there's a screwdriver there, but it burnt. Uh, guardrail posts there. There's the other guardrail post, so we have some damage there. Uh, preliminary just estimate of expenses for material were right around a thousand dollars. I would assume that it's somewhere, uh, one and a half to two times the cost of the materials for labor. We have talked with the individual who, um, started the fire, he admitted to the fire. It's on, we got a report on it. I asked that gentleman to, to contact his insurance agent if he wants, just to let him know that this has happened and we're continuing on that. So, but I want the board to be aware of that. And I guess anybody else that may be listening, that is doing some controlled burning, to make sure that, that it doesn't get into the road right of way and damage, uh, tile intakes, anything that, uh, would be in the road for road purposes. Uh, Laptop Service, they are starting crack fill, they started yesterday, no, today, excuse me. They're down by St. Benedict, uh, on B forty six. Uh, we have a safety meeting scheduled for the road department, April twenty five. That will be in the morning, beginning at eight o'clock, and running through noon or one o'clock. That, and then I don't know if the board has had an opportunity, the Senate Study Bill one twenty seven, or tw- twenty seven, House, uh, Study Bill three twenty eight talks about the property tax amendments. Tammy, have you?
A little bit, not in detail.
There's a lot of changes proposed, uh, with valuations and taxable valuations, which in turn changes a lot of levy rates.
It will be a big change if it goes through as proposed.
But anyway, the road department, they pretty much set some maximums, half of what, the levy rates would be half of what is allowing it right now. Now, depending on what our valuation is, taxable valuation, what they multiply by, uh, no one seems to know that right now.
Yeah.
I can't get a number on that, but there's a lot of different ways that are being proposed.
We had gotten an email that, um, legislators are making changes on a weekly basis to the bills, and, um, it encourage input from, um, county officials, um, to help them understand why something works or why something doesn't work. So, um, but that a bill is going to pass, is the message we're getting. So, not to send an email, not to do it, because it's going to, they, it's more helpful to send what we'd like to have changed, because they've made it very clear something will pass.
Uh, we continue, I got a meeting tomorrow with FEMA, it might be the last one, but, uh, the category Z administration, we're getting that all taken care of. At the transfer station, we hired Troy, a gentleman by the name Troy Fox, who'll be working, and he begins there Monday. And that's kind of everything from the roads. Uh, Casu Waste Management, we got an annual meeting scheduled there for April twenty ninth, and- And we have the financial assurance yet that we'll take care of. And self-insurance, Donna and Doug, heard your guys' discussion this morning, will start working on that as well, so. That kind of completes, that kind of completes everything for me.
This discussion about valuations and limiting levies, and I know people want results, but, and this is a question out of state. Well, maybe the state may have this question, but certainly they know that the road departments and counties across state can't operate on half the money they've been operating.
There's, there's ambiguity in what they even, even written in that amendment. Because they refer to, they refer to one section that they do not change, and they change it in other sections. So, they, you know, all the code sections, they all go back and forth and they refer to each other. And so I, I don't know, I, I would hope so.
So what?
We, we, ISAC and the County Engineers Association is just kind of taking note, at least for this particular, the road levy rates, until we know what those valuations are to see what those dollars really end up being. But I, I would hope that with your original statement, they would know, or they would have some sort of sense that it's difficult to continue providing the service with less.
No, you did. Any other questions for Doug? Thank you, and have a good week.
Yes, you guys too.
Thanks, Doug.
Okay. We're up to drainage then. Perfect timing, Marge and Tyler. Well, okay, Tammy's gonna refill her coffee, so. Then we can have a discussion, decision, update on water quality wetland projects with Tyler.
Morning to all.
Good morning.
I'll start. We finally got these in.
Oh, perfect.
These are the flow charts, they're updated for.
That doesn't help yourself to mark up.
Thank you. So I brought three of them up just.
I'm not done.
For, uh, for reference and use there. And then, I've got some copies here, just to, if people are all right. Sharon, we're looking at a couple of these, these are, uh. These are for the, uh, thank you. Yes. Two of them here. These are, and are we good for me to just roll right into this?
Yeah, go ahead, roll right into it.
Perfect.
Yep, we're good.
These are, uh, the results of, there was a 28E agreement with the Iowa Department of Agricultural and Land Stewardship for, uh, some water quality initiatives, water quality projects that were either not directly associated with drainage districts or that were tangents to some of them. And what IDELS had asked some county partners for was the, the use of administrative assistance and, uh, for invoicing and eventually some bidding and, um, bookkeeping for, uh, construction invoices and things like that. That was March early last year, or, or even maybe end of 2023.
The 2023?
Yes, when the 28E was.
That's a good couple of years.
Okay, so it's, it's been a couple of years. Um, but IDELS was approaching, uh, partner counties essentially just for, um, the staff availabilities as well as the expertise that the counties had in some of that record-keeping, bookkeeping ways. So we have actually been invoicing for the design of these works through that. They come in, they're, they're recognized at this, at, at the county level. Marge, I believe, can go to IDELS, get the funds from them, you're recuperated, and then that money falls to us. So it never at any point is putting the county behind on anything. It, it's mostly just a, a checks and balances system. And so, then these two are the first of several others coming through that are, uh, the one here, that the more full set, that is to the northeast of town. This one is not associated with any drainage district that I can tell. It is a saturated buffer system that is nearing, uh, the final design has been done and is nearing the bidding process. So this is an update and I guess a clarification that IDELS intent is still to utilize, uh, the board and the auditor's office for that bidding process, have those opened, received at a, at a board meeting. Again, for that, uh, staff availability and, uh, and bookkeeping side of it. The saturated buffers are, they are on the outlet of larger tile systems. What they do is they don't stop the flow in that tile system. They divert water off into sidelines that are able to then more slowly, uh, release water through the, the channel, side slopes and, uh, reduce, um, the nutrients, excess nutrients in the water that way, through the microbial habitats of those ditch banks. So, both of these are saturated buffers. One, again, the, the one that is the, the KOS 962913A is not associated with the district that I can tell, or, or even really tangent to one. It is the one more closely ready for bidding. The one that is entering into final design is the single page that I presented that is to the northwest of Algonquin. That is at the outlet of Drainage District 116, but the tile that is utilized is not, uh, it's, uh, it's not directly.
Yeah, township and section, please.
Um, let's see, the township and section on the, this, this one's more easy to, because of the, the project number to IDELS is actually the second town.
Going actually.
Yeah.
Okay.
That is, that is how that goes, and then.
Well, for the blue line is up there, it's on blue.
Yep, yep, where the project location is being, is pointed to. And then on the single, on this.
I didn't see that, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're, no, you're fine. And so, uh, yeah, here to answer those kinds of questions too. And then the other one is on the, the section, or the, the project line down there at the bottom. It's 962934. So wanted to give an update again for clarification for.
Yes.
For the ones that are not associated with the drainage district and like the one that you said that's close to bid, is that being paid for by the landowner or?
That, this is, it's all through IDELS. It's the funding that's all provided through the state. There is not in any, any anticipation, there, there's not any expectation for payment coming from, uh, the counties or any of the districts. Again, this is all, all that has been.
I thought so, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, for, for clarification, yep. And again, everything that comes in is, is simply for a, a review and oversight level. There is not an expectation of any sort of reimbursement or payments until that's been received from the state. That's how it all, it comes in, it goes, it goes through review to them, and then the money comes back before it ever gets to, to any of the parties that have submitted those invoices.
So is it improper to ask who initiated all this?
The, the initiation from this came from, um, from the state, from IDELS. Uh, they have, they're always looking for, for sites, um, interested landowners. So it, it's kind of twofold between landowners and the state. The state through IDELS is what's funding these, these projects, um, for, for the landowners. Again, landowners, property owners that are interested. And I, I guess rather, however, the volume of these that are coming in, IDELS is not staffed to, to do a lot of that, the bookkeeping side of it, the, the oversight, making sure that things fall in line with, so that there's not huge overruns on things. And so, um, the intent of the 28E that these are coming out of is to attempt to, in a, in a, in as minimal a way as possible, utilize additional staffs within the counties that these projects are going to be constructed.
Boots, boots on the ground.
Right, yes.
And, and I know you touched on it a couple of times, but I think saying it bluntly is good here. These are all voluntary projects.
Yep.
It's landowners that are willing, no, nothing's being taken by eminent domain or, or forcing anything through this, it's all voluntary projects.
Nope, and, and they do not affect the drainage of the existing systems.
Yep.
Things that are being, being done here are, are lower and, and draw-off lines. Nothing is ever, nothing on any of these that ever comes through.
Is going to impact the ability to drain the water.
Exactly, exactly.
You're working with Sean McCoy on this, or?
Um, that's, uh.
With the water show, or? I don't know, it wouldn't be the same.
No.
Pete probably wouldn't be the representative for that, would he?
Right, it's, it's more through, um, the engineers I know with, with IDELS that are a part of this are, um, Mike Morland, Sarah Smith, um, Matt Lichtenberg with, with IDELS. So the context.
You're directly with IDELS here.
We're working directly with IDELS on these, yes.
Yep.
They are, they are state-funded and, and sought-after projects.
I think they're great projects, I mean, we've been looking into them too, so, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, it's, it's more or less, uh, an update of where those projects sit, that they're, they're coming through. And the anticipation is, especially like I said, for this one, that, that's actually stapled on the plans to it, that, uh, we will be submitting this one shortly to actually take it to bid for construction.
And I think, you know, these.
Yes, yep.
And I think the.
Oh yeah, I should say the one, the one is Lusher.
I saw it on the second page.
Yep, the, the one is Lusher, the other one is Mansfield, are the landowners there.
I think it's worth noting, the, the premise behind all these projects, I mean, the voluntary aspect of it, I think, makes it much better received rather than Des Moines Water Works lawsuit that tried to force a bunch of things or whatever else. There's, there's things like this that can be incentivized and pursued with state funds or any other grant programs or whatever that can have an impact on water quality without.
Without taking.
Going too far.
Yeah, absolutely, no, I, it's.
So I think it's, it's a good example.
Yeah, I, IDELS does, does great as far as their communications with landowners, their, their seeking in these projects and seeing them through to.
And this has, has been a slow in the works.
Yeah, it's.
I mean, it, it's been talked about for probably upwards of four years, but I know like actual agreements and stuff has been probably.
And, and the, the framework and the building out of that, and what this seeks to help with is, is what makes it slow at the beginning, so.
And that's probably the right way to do it.
Right, yeah.
Especially for this.
Right. So that, that's, uh, yeah, that's just, uh, it serves really more as a, I'm not sure we're even really looking for any sort of action at this time. Just an update, here's what, here's what they are, here's what to anticipate. And, uh, and that we're, they're working through the system, so. Felt it was time for an update on those, especially because the two were, were going to be in front of everybody shortly. So, and without, other than that, any other questions, comments, concerns, or that's all I have?
You said they do not impede any tile on those at all.
They, and they actually, when they're, any sort of structure that's used to intercept water from those lines takes low flow from the bottom. It's never anything where it's stacked to, to take it. It always draws down from the bottom. High flows and everything like that, that these lines can't take, goes just as it always did.
Well, and, and you could kind of look at the plans and see that, like, say this one pager, it's got the existing outlet running along the edge, and then the water that'd be diverted would kind of go through the middle. And it, it keeps the existing system or replaces the existing system with new in some cases, I believe.
Right, what, what they are is the installation of tile lines that run, so the, on this one, the single page, the, the tile that comes in is, the flows that can are diverted into the installation of perforated tile lines that are along either side of the channel. And that's where the water, that's where the low-flow waters flow into, they get into those perforated lines. And instead of those perforations being used to draw water, they're used to seep the water back out through the, the soil profile along the channel. And that's where the, the microbes that eat the nitrogen and essentially just breathe it out into the, and to gas, which is what, 70% of our atmosphere is anyway. So that, that's the, that's the thought on those. You're, you're utilizing the, in the, in the simplest way, you're utilizing the sides, side banks of the channels as wetlands for tile water. All right? Thank you.
Thanks, Tyler.
Yeah, and again, we've got those there.
All right, so we did not need, you know, any decision for that, so. We'll go ahead with repair requests, Marge.
Amber's the winner.
Amber is the winner today. Just, just barely. You got one, two, and three.
Probably not time to use it, is it?
Yep, see you, Tyler.
Bye, Tyler.
Thanks. Thank you. I'm not shocked by mine, as I've. I was going to say that was the one you were talking about last. Go for it.
I'm, well, I'm going to tell you, I didn't do research on them, I know I've talked to Roger, but, um.
That's okay, now, now you got the requests.
But I have the request, so I figured, well, you know, why would I do a bunch of what I'm going to tell? I've actually been approved to take care of my requests, so. But I did kind of want to know who they were and where they were at beforehand, so I got copies from Marge, but, you know, I will. I, how about I'll handle it?
Handle it how you will.
That's a good motion.
Motion to all handle it. All right, uh, yeah, go ahead and read them, or?
Oh yeah, is that what we do?
Yeah, so just, just like, say the number, drainage district.
I, yeah, I, I can hit the number, the district, township and section, kind of what, pretty good way it is.
All right, so, um, request number 12 is in HK 5-87. Um, it's in the northeast of the northeast quarter of Buffalo Township. And it says it's lateral 14A, it's plugged, um, plugged or is a broken tile that needs to be repaired. And then, uh, request number 16 is Drain 86 Main Tile. It's a broken tile. It's in the northwest of the northwest quarter of Buffalo Township, it's washout. Um, it does have a note here to check the open ditch culvert, um, in Section 12 of Portland. And then, set, uh, request number 17 is Drainage District 84. And then, set, uh, request number seventeen is Drainage District eighty four Old Main. In the northeast of the northeast quarter of Plum Creek Township, section twenty five. Uh, it says from intake with fence around it southwest fifty yards, I'm assuming that's the location description, Marge? Uh, it's a large washout, needs repaired, so. Any other information you'd like to hear off of these requests?
Sounds good, guys.
All right, um, number thirteen I have is in DD eighty lateral two. It says DD eighty lateral two at the top, but then it's Ramsey, section twenty three, and it's the outlet for DD twenty Main Two. Says cement box good on sluice side, needs improvement, restriction needs taken out, requesting sixty inch and two tenths grade. Can't read that, and then one inch drainage coefficient, smooth wall. Um, and this is requested global enterprise by Joe Goshi. Um.
That's eighteen hundred acres, I think is what that says.
Could be, um. I guess, first off, an improvement would need to be sent to an engineer by the code, so. If we're gonna do that, that would be next steps there. This is also, I guess it. It raises a number of questions in my head, um, this is the same tile system that Joe has recently requested. Remove or heavily reduce him from the assessment schedule because of a private tile. So, I'm not sure if he's asking for a one inch coefficient just right there at the bottom or what that really entails, but. I don't know if anyone on the board has any thoughts or questions to that, or we could send it to an engineer and try and work through the process. As well, but it's.
You know what he wants, I mean, I don't know.
It appears he's requesting a one inch drainage coefficient improvement, um.
For the outlet or the whole thing, or?
I don't know.
I mean, smart, can you find out?
Yeah, but either way, an improvement would need to go to an engineer, um, so the scope of the improvement could be. Investigated as we go through that process, but.
So this is, this is, this is not a repair at the outlet, or do you think it's more than just a small repair?
It it appears to be, yes, um, I do know.
Does the whole thing out of order?
Not necessarily out of order, but how we handle it would be a next step, instead of just directing you to take care of it, we would appoint an engineering firm, um, to handle it. So. I guess. I mean, we can, we can investigate whether there is a restriction there, um, and if there's not a restriction, we can do that with televising or any other investigation. But if there's not a restriction, then it would need to follow the improvement process and have an engineer involved regardless of the scope.
Is the word improvement, why there, we have to be thinking of an engineer or like?
Yeah.
Like, I'm just wondering from being a rookie, if that's how I'm looking at this, says we gotta get an engineer, so that's just what I'm trying to understand.
Improvement isn't, um, it does say it needs improvement, but it also re- has a one inch drainage coefficient that's requested and that's. Obviously not something that would have been in place when this current system was installed, probably a hundred years ago. It's probably in the neighborhood plus or minus a quarter inch right now, probably more in the neighborhood of an eight, if I was to guess. But those calculations and those figures all get presented at public hearings and when you go through the improvement process, but I wouldn't know that off the top of my head.
Seem like contact could find out what he really wants to happen.
Yep, um, so that can be done, um. Do we want any other further action or table this for today and get more information?
I'd say for that, yeah, for sure, before we dive into.
Yep.
An expensive.
Yep, and I'd be, I'd support that as well. Then number fourteen is DD ninety lateral forty, section twenty nine of Lincoln. Broken tile needs repaired for Ronnie Ubin, and looks like Grant's got that repaired, so that's the two I have.
Okay, so does that need, sorry, I'm just trying to understand, so if it says Grant Farm Drainage Repair, who got them to repair it, did the landowner or before filling out the request?
Probably. Probably, yeah, and a lot of times that happens if they think that it might be private, they call someone to come out fix it, and then they dig it up and it's like, oh, no, this is county. So that does happen.
Okay, I just wanted to understand that.
Yeah.
Okay, Jack? Someday maybe, Jack, someday. Uh, number fifteen is in DD forty in City Woodmore there, request I talked about last week, last week to jet out and clean the main tile there. Okay, uh.
So, what are you gonna do? Is that what you're gonna do?
That's what we're gonna do, I mean, 'cause that's gonna be done regardless, uh, we we need to clean it out, and and so what I. And that, this is gonna be, I was gonna mention this too today, is I think we need to set a date for an informational hearing, um, at some point here for. For landowners in that district and just to discuss options and and how we're gonna handle this going forward here, so. So, I would, I would like to have this, this, who are, do the jetting and cleaning, I mean, they're as good as anybody is gonna be and and should potentially they. Have the, the option that we go with, it would make sense to to do that all together too, so.
Yeah, and I wouldn't have any issues with that, the only thing I would say as far as a meeting or a hearing with the district, I would suggest the formal process of a full public hearing.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And just because there is a difference in terminology of a public hearing versus an informational hearing.
Okay.
Um, so. The purpose of sharing information and stuff is the same, but an informational hearing. Is not bound by the same notice requirements and doesn't carry quite as much effect in the code.
Sure.
As a full public hearing of the district. So, just thought I'd throw that out for discussion, food for thought, but yeah, I I would agree, I think. Getting something scheduled, if we can do it here. I mean, even if we were to set a date on it and had forty days, um, in between your, your open it early summer anyway, so. I think that would probably be reasonable, so people aren't crazy in the field and everything else.
And regardless kind of of, if we were to do some sort of the lining. Doesn't really matter who we go with, what we do is, but if we're gonna do a lining, they like to do it in the winter time.
Okay, that's good information to know.
Yep.
Both companies have said that same time, right?
Uh, yes, but, uh, they like to do it, they like to do it in the winter because. That's just the easiest for them to to do the process for water flow and and everything, yep. So, so we'd be, and I asked, I asked both of them, I said, so theoretically, if I have you come and jet it and clean it. Then is it gonna be still, still good to go, you know, come the falling winter, and they said, yeah, that that'll all be part of the process and and.
Sure, we won't be spending the same.
That's what I was, just didn't wanna come back and then spend the same amount of money to have you do it again and retelevis it and do all that again, so, um.
Get that right.
Right, right, so, anyway. But I think, I think we need to move forward with a public hearing of some kind, um, to to get that rolling. And then the board would handle, if it's under the threshold, then the board would handle the bids, correct?
Could, yes.
Or could handle the bids, yeah, if we did not have an engineer involved. Okay. So, but today is just the repair request to get the tile jetted.
Which probably needs to happen regardless of any other.
That's, that's what I'm saying, regardless of if.
Needs work for this year.
Whoever does it, it does it, it needs to be done. Uh, I'll get a motion to have the supervisors handle their requests.
And to table.
I would make that motion with the exception of number thirteen.
Do you want to table that or just put with the exception?
Table or postpone till ne- postpone that till next week.
I'll second the motion. Motion by Spector and second by Wactor. Any discussion on any of the repair requests or motion made here? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. Anything else for us, Marge?
I don't believe so.
Okay, I did get word back last night. Yeah, yeah, I think it was yesterday evening, got word back from Colin Jacobson Westergaard. That there are no Indian burial grounds or arrowheads, uh, that will cause issues with PAK one, so we can.
Aw, good.
Move forward with our.
Good.
Move forward with our permit with the Army Corps, he's sending that to them and hopefully we'll be good to go here shortly, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Good deal.
Thank you, Marge, thank you.
Okay. Discussion with the county auditor.
Okay, don't forget at twelve o'clock you have your assessors budget hearing. And then, I think I forwarded you this flyer, Algonah Business and Community Forum, April seventeenth from seven thirty to nine o'clock AM. Where business owners, administrators, managers, HR, and marketing staff are invited to attend the event and learn and ask questions about community and economic development updates. I did put that on the agenda in case you guys wanted to attend that, so that's Thursday from seven thirty to nine AM. Next week, we already have a lot on the agenda, um, you'll approve the elected official compensation schedule by resolution, we'll have the public hearing for. The budget for twenty five, twenty six. Then you'll have adoption of the budget and certification of taxes. Um, Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation, quarterly reports. And a second reading for the proposed Kissimmee County Animal Control Ordinance. Set date and time for the first reading of amended ordinance one fourteen C, which is the operation of all terrain vehicles. And set date and time for five twelve A, establishing rules and regulations for protection regulation and control of all parks, et cetera. So next week will be busy already, of course, that could change. Um, we talked earlier about Deb moving to the county attorney's office, which I'm very excited for her, but which means we have an opening round for housekeeping. Um, so yesterday I, um, did go through with Donna our housekeeping position notice, I would like it to stay housekeeping, um. I would like to talk a little bit about the salary of that person, um, so I'd like to talk, mention it today, talk about it today, but then put it on the agenda for next week. The notice will say applications will be accepted until May second, twenty twenty five, um, and then hopefully we can. Get some good applicants for that. So when Deb was hired in twenty twenty two, the starting wage for the housekeeping position was fifteen dollars an hour. Donna and I talked yesterday, we didn't get very many applications for that position, um, it's just not a big salary. Donna and I thought, um, maybe, and of course, we can talk about this next week, but I just wanted to bring it up, um, starting sixteen after six months, seventeen and after a year, eighteen. Like you said, this is just for talking points, um. She did have where it started at fifteen, went to sixteen after six months, and then seventeen after a year, um, but. Um, it's just not, I just don't think we're gonna get a lot of applicants at at that amount, so. That's why I'm suggesting sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, which I still think is kind of low, um, but I'd like to know your guys' thoughts.
Do they work four, does she work forty hours, like is theirs, uh, in four days a week?
Yes, so she has Mondays off and then works ten hour days, so, yeah.
So like, what kind of hours is that?
She usually comes in, so we let, when we advertise for that position, we kind of let them decide what time they wanted to come in, and so she comes in at five thirty. In the morning and then stays till four thirty.
Easier to do some of that when nobody sees her.
Right, and they don't get paid for their lunches, so, um.
So that's strictly forty hours?
Correct, yeah.
The custodians the same?
Custodians are the same, yes.
So give me the history on that, 'cause I, obviously, I wasn't here in twenty twenty two. What? Or what prompted the position to begin with?
Well, it was here before I came here.
Oh, you said she was, oh, oh, okay.
There was a different housekeeper.
We've always had a housekeeper, oh, I thought, I don't know why I took it as that was a new position.
No, it was a housekeeper custodial, and then we changed it to just housekeeping after talking to the custodial staff that we had here and some.
Okay.
Other things, but yes, it was a position before that person retired.
Okay.
So then Deb started in twenty twenty two.
Sorry, I misunderstood that, yeah.
No, that's okay.
Okay.
So I don't know, I, of course, I'm not looking for a decision today, I just wanted to bring it up and talk about it so that when we started getting applicant, applications back, I can maybe know what to tell them.
And that should probably be added to the wage scale resolution too.
Yes, and I do have a note to add that to the wage scale as well, once you guys have decided that.
I would agree with you, I know. Especially where we end up with no other employees in the courthouse, I know it's different, but still, it's a lot of responsibility.
It is, and.
For a lot of buildings.
Right, and the custodial staff, which of course has a lot different responsibilities, are quite a bit higher than that, so, um, you know.
Benefits.
Benefits, full benefits, just like everybody else, it's a full-time position.
Does the custodial staff work four times?
Yes.
They have Monday off?
No, they alternate, so she has Monday off, one has Thursday off, one has Friday off, so that they don't all have the same day off, 'cause we need to have somebody here, so.
So if there's a snow event in the winter, does that change, does it, all hands on deck or?
Yes, yes, they do come in unless they have a prior engagement, but they do come in to help with snow removals on their days off, yes, they're really good about that. So we have, um, are looking at changing the job description a little bit, we thought we had before, there were a couple things on the job description. Like one of them is that the housekeeping staff will be part of their rotation, so right now, they, um, come in on weekends to check the buildings to make sure there isn't any issues. And the housekeeper was put in on that rotation, so they'd only have it once every three weeks. But there, it was brought up. Um, and I talked to one of the custodians yesterday about this, he doesn't think that that housekeeping position should be put on that rotation schedule. For the reason being, they don't know what they're looking for. Um, they haven't had the training the other two have, they don't know what, you know, have a boiler license or any of that thing, um, so. And if there is a problem, they're gonna have to call one of the other ones in to come help them anyway, so, um, I think we are gonna take that off of the job description. And go back to two-week rotations with the two custodial staff.
That makes sense, does, do the custodial staff help with any of that housekeeping cleaning, like, it just seems like a lot of buildings to.
Yeah, yeah, so on the, when, um, when that person's on their days off on Monday, um. The custodial staff will have to pick up that day, you know, pick up what she would usually do on Monday, so.
But do they do anything throughout the week?
Ha- for housekeeping?
Yeah.
No.
And, oh. Okay, what building is, is housekeeping responsible for?
Anson Courthouse.
Oh, okay, who does the election center?
Um, that's kind of on, like, as needed, they all take care of it, so if we rent it out or whatever, they all kind of go over and make sure it's cleaned up and everything's done, so.
Okay.
So, yeah, so it, yeah, the job. So, yeah, so it, yeah, the job description for housekeeping just says Annex and courthouse and then they're all kind of. Um, and then Ron does the sheriff's office and.
Ron, all the sheriff's office.
That's how he wants it, he wants it. Okay, so I will put that on the agenda for next week to determine or set the wage for that. Elizabeth with Gardner will be here either at the end of next week or the week of the twenty-eighth. So she has everything she needs now and, um, she, all solution counties, as she told me in the email, are having same problems we are having, so now everybody seems to be ready now with, um, getting things back, but she thought end of next week or beginning of the twenty-eighth, so then we can get that, the audit done and be ready to roll.
Albert, board discussion?
Part of that meeting, but that's probably been thoroughly vetted by now, uh, other than that, I don't believe I did anything.
Yeah, I think everything I looked at is already discussed, so, yeah.
Josh?
Yeah, uh, so I went to North Central Regional Emergency Response, um, committee and commission last week, just kind of went over some of the, um, training and stuff with the hazmat team, uh, they've had some retirements, they're looking to try to fill some positions over there that have, uh, CDL, certified to drive like the hazmat trucks and stuff like that, they have a, um, hazmat event. Uh, probably a couple of weeks ago now, over in Charles City, they're kind of talking about that, there was like a plastics molding, uh, factory over there that kind of went up in flames, um, so they had some.
That melted.
Yeah, yeah, so they were, they were doing some testing of that to make sure there wasn't, you know, high level of toxins in the air. They said that, that went pretty good, um, they were discussing the Gemini meter, uh, they're looking at this Gemini meter, I'm not super familiar with it, but it's a piece of equipment that they use to, um, measure, you know, toxins in the air and stuff like that, originally, they were gonna get a grant from FEMA for that, but with FEMA, um, kind of being in question right now, they, we're not sure if they're gonna get the, that grant now, um. Uh, they did talk about the, there's a nuclear power plant that's gonna be restarted here in Iowa. They're looking at doing that in the next couple of years, I can't remember the location of that, Eastern Iowa.
Doing all, doing all of it.
Yeah, yep, yep, that's the one.
The only one.
It's in Lynn County.
I was thinking, I don't know, I heard too, but.
I don't think so, but I could be wrong, I was that, I'll get bogged down with that, but.
Sure, yep, yep.
I think you're right, I don't know of any other nuclear sites.
So, yeah, they're talking about restarting that, um.
This is North Central Regional Hazen, this what?
So it's North Central Regional Emergency, um, planning, yeah, it's emergency response, uh, basically the hazmat team.
Do we give them money?
Yes, we have, it, they're with NICOG, it's.
Help me out, help me out.
North Iowa area.
I don't know where the high one NICOG is, but, so, do we get NICOG money directly?
Yes, we have a twenty-eight year.
How much money?
Well, it depends, but there's a couple of different ways we give them money through.
Broke down, you think the budget is it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, um.
I think that first.
Twelve thousand is NCRRC.
And then there should be another one for transit.
Yeah, there's thirty-one and a half, thirty-two thousand for transit, so there's a couple, and there's three thousand for housing. Yeah, there's a couple pieces there on that discretionary page.
Is it discretionary?
Really?
Not really.
They kind of sent us the bill.
If we said next year we weren't gonna pay it, it wouldn't work, right?
Well, i- and that kind of goes into the discussion too with the, the financials, um, the financials for that, that commission is is doing really well. Um, so far they're at, uh, the current total is seventy-one thousand, uh, four hundred and eighteen and some change. Of the hundred and forty-three thousand that's budgeted for this year, um, they're behind on some trainings and stuff like that that they haven't uh, done quite yet this year, so, and they are on the same, uh, facility, so, so they're sitting pretty, uh, comfortable with the, with the current budget right now, um.
Tell them they can always reduce the rate so that we don't send them way too much.
They actually haven't increased the rate in the last couple of years, and that's because of what they've done with some of the money, they've actually put it towards CDs and stuff like that to, um, gain interest, and they use.
They're investing money?
They're, well, they're u- and they're utilizing that interest as part, uh, partial, you know, portion of like their, their, um, income to. Basically, they're keeping the per capita charge, you know, the same, and it hasn't changed in, I think, two, three years because they're doing that. So they haven't increased anything with that, so. Uh, yeah, the, the, uh, commission which follows the, the committee, um, we also, along with the financials, we discussed the, the audit that was done, um, nothing major in the audit that was found that other than, um, one item that was dealt with like delegation, um, like the custodial delegation of like, uh, how things are handled when they come in. You know, instead of moving from one person to another, they stay with the same person, and that's only because of the, the limited amount of people that they, employees that they have there, so.
That's normal in most budgets.
Yep, 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 so that's.
Or audits, sorry.
Yeah, that was about the only thing they, they found, really, uh, so that was good. Following the regional, um, emergency response, we had the, the, uh, Region Two Policy Board meeting, the Transportation Policy Board meeting, um. Just kind of discuss some of the, the projects and, and things like that, the, uh, Region Twos is working on with financing projects for like road grade construction and things like that throughout the different counties, um. We've got a couple of projects in the works that, that are being funded through that, I believe in twenty twenty-nine, um, so. You know, they, they go out so many years and they give money from the state to put towards those projects and and the, uh, you know, each county engineer goes in and applies for those, um, those dollars to be able to use towards their, their road projects, and that's all, you know, just basically funded through that, that, so. Um, they also kind of discuss different projects, uh, alternative transportation, bike paths, walking paths, things like that, that they kind of do. Uh, some projects, uh, one of the biggest projects that they're doing recently is they're doing a bike path that goes between Clear Lake and Mason City. On that, uh, can't remember what the road is, but, um, not the highway, but the one they.
Next one, the next one.
Oldest, 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 the, the.
Don't you have a bike path, they, are they extending it or just?
They, yep. So they're actually connecting the pi- the path together, so now you can actually get through, you know, on that bike path from Mason City to Clear Lake.
Because that's a nice path, that's a really nice path.
It wasn't connected, yeah.
It is, yep, I biked on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, like Webster County is doing a bunch with bike paths.
Oh, yeah.
Paths now.
They're gonna need some growth in Port Nard of the Badger now.
I think their goal is to connect every community in the county with
Yep.
bike or walking paths, in addition to the roadways, which is.
They're, yeah, and they also discussed some of that with, well, Algonah, I know, um, Jacob, Jacob, the city administrator's been working with, uh, Doug and, and working to see if we can get some funds to do a bike path from Algonah to Call Park, uh, there's a lot of people that walk that road, if you ever drive out that way, there's a lot of people that walk that road or bike that road, so.
There is, kind of dangerous, I guess.
It is, well, especially going across that bridge.
Yeah, yeah, it's near up there, yeah.
Yep, yep, so they've been, they've been working on trying to get some funds for that, um. They, the Iowa DOT representative was there, she kind of gave an update on current project on Highway eighteen just outside of town, they are, can't remember what date she said, but they're letting that project this, this month, um, to get that started this spring, so. And then she also did inform me that in the next five years, it hasn't, there's no funding towards it yet, but in the next five years, they're gonna be uh, looking to convert the intersection at eighteen and one sixty-nine into a roundabout.
Oh, no.
They've been talking about that for years.
It works just fine.
It does work just fine, I go through it every day.
Well, they were gonna do, they were, number of years ago, they were gonna do stoplights, and that got shut down, yep, and then.
Roundabout.
I asked her.
Tell them we're not Minnesota.
So.
They've been driving, they've been going through Blue Earth too often.
Well, they're doing some roundabouts in different areas, they're looking at doing roundabouts in Mason City.
They're everywhere.
Four dogs, a couple too.
So I asked her, I said, so how do we petition to not have a roundabout in, in Algonah, and she, the long an- or the short answer was you want them because they're safer, and I didn't remember.
I don't see how, I was just in Mankato, I cannot see how that is safer.
Yeah, well, you drive.
I'm gonna go first.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you drive through Fairmont, you gotta get around three of them before you get north of town, it's blurred, yeah.
There's pros, there's pros and cons to them, I mean, I know people had to go through Blue Earth, and if you had every stoplight red, it's ten minutes, and if you hit every stoplight green, it's three minutes to get through town before they put the roundabouts in, so like, now it's
That's one.
Maybe five minutes every time, but.
Well, I've seen semis go around those roundabouts, and there's a lot of semi traffic right there with the pioneer there and the gas station.
And their back doors.
Semis, yeah, they're what, it goes over the curve, yeah.
They end up driving over the curve, I watch it all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bad place for them.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, that was my thought, I was thinking, you know, if you go down there and interview some of the, you know, do a survey with a lot of the truck drivers, you know.
Yeah.
Tell you where to stick around about.
It won't be there.
Yeah, they're caught somewhere, but they had to change, they put one in, then they had to change it because it didn't accommodate the, well, the fifty-three foot trailers and everything and.
There, there was, uh, where was that, it was over on, I believe it was on Highway sixty-nine, it was a community on Highway sixty-nine over there, but they're.
Hope it happens.
Kind of, it's.
There's a lot of, it's self, it's self-service, a lot of fire machinery that goes through there too, and, uh, they're already using both lanes, and, and I, and, uh, I, my, I'll say this for the record, my impression of you, this is somebody looking to spend money where it doesn't need to be spent.
Okay.
Um, other than that.
Tell them, tell them to patch the holes in one sixty-nine and eighteen before they spend money on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll do that next time.
I'd be a better use of tax dollars.
Yeah, um, I think with that, that was, uh, about it.
Okay.
I, I am supposed to have a meeting tonight, uh, E nine-one-one, I was gonna see if you'd be available as the alternate to be able to go to that.
Oh, tonight?
Yeah, six o'clock at the training conference.
Sure, yeah, I should be able to do that.
Okay.
Tonight and?
Yeah, good, thanks.
Six o'clock.
Good. Do you get the email notifications?
I don't.
I'll forward the one that I got that has the, the info.
Yeah, that'll be good.
I'll tell, uh, Chris, you can get you added to, yep.
Yeah, yeah, sure, six o'clock tonight, I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Hits me up.
I.
That's, that's the best answer ever.
Dave's cooking tonight.
Hits me out of cooking.
I messed it up, sorry.
Oh.
See what Dave makes for you when he gets home.
Yeah.
Um, I, I had no meetings, I got board of health meeting tomorrow morning, and, uh, my watershed meeting got canceled due to lack of agenda items. And so that, I, yeah, I had no meetings, um.
That has never happened here.
Yeah, I do have a question, I had a call from a constituent and wondered, we had a repair request last, last year that didn't get fixed, but it just got fixed here this spring, the contractor didn't get to it in time last fall, um. In the course of time, the water has cut in pretty deep, or it's washed out quite a bit, um, in his field, so does the county pay for fixing that, because he'll have to take out a, a blade or something and, and resh- redo some of that, uh, is that the county?
If it was.
Or is that something that he just will be responsible for, and I didn't know how we'd ever handle that in the past.
If it was anywhere significant, it should have been fixed with the original request, so, yeah.
Well, that's kind of what I.
Drainage district expense.
Okay, okay. So, all right, um, and then, con- I'm asked by contractor when he's getting paid, uh, is that, is that comes after the assessments, yeah?
It comes.
Or when there's money in the account?
When there's money in the account.
I was gonna say, what are you asking about, because the, the structure of the question is important to get the right answer.
Okay, uh.
Do they have warrants already issued to them?
This is just for repair requests.
Yes, but did we process the bill already and pay them in warrants?
Yes, it'd still be standpoint.
But I don't, I know we, we have the bill, uh, but I'm not sure, we've had the bill a little while, but I'm not sure what. If so, if there's money in the account, it would have been paid, if there's not, it would have.
No.
If regardless, whenever we got the bill, it should have been put on our drainage claims for the first Tuesday of the month to be paid. Whether or not there's money in the account would determine whether a check was cut or whether, uh, a warrant was issued, so they should have been issued a warrant.
But you can check with March and she'll be able to tell you.
So, yeah, it depends on the situation, but if they got a warrant already, then they'll be notified of that through the normal process when funds come in, which would correlate with the assessment schedule.
Yeah, so Nick will let them know when there's money if they're, depending on where they are in the world.
If it, if it hasn't been processed yet, that's a separate question scenario.
Haven't, haven't you guys said that there's people that will buy the warrants from the?
Yeah, uh-huh, thanks.
Yeah, you can take them to the banks.
Individuals or banks?
So this is a, yep, doesn't sound like an issue about what they're gonna get paid type of thing, right?
Depends on what the question is.
Yeah, there it is.
And some people aren't aware that they can take it to a bank to be bought, um.
Yep. And if they're not aware of that, that's where, if they've been issued a warrant, yeah, they can either wait till it gets called in, then you can take it to a bank, or we have a list of individuals that will buy them. So if they want cash tomorrow, then you would proceed down those steps from the equation.
Well, this is a contractor that does not do a lot of work for the county.
They might have, they might have to process.
So that, yeah, I'm, I would imagine they probably.
And this isn't Raffles, you know, we did. So, okay, I'll, I'll talk to Marge about it.
I'm guessing I know who it is.
Yep, all right, well, I got nothing else. And if nobody else does either, yeah, motion.
To adjourn.
Okay, motion by Stecker to adjourn, need a second.
Second.
Second by Garmin, any discussion on adjournings, not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Any power. Yep.
So Josh, I got a.